To be here.
Yeah.
And on that subject, if you recall, board members, they didn't want to have any trees put on their lot, on the subdivision that's being built. And we didn't make a decision. We wanted to think about it and so forth. And that's where two tree, in fact, most of the times, it's three trees are planted on a lot. It happens to be on their property. It's not in the right of way, but it's on their property. It's our rules and regulations. And I know it's a problem. It makes the neighborhood look better and so forth. And the problem that they had is they had a couple of Bartlett pears that were put, Bradford pears, that were put on their property in Weymouth, and they inevitably had to take them down because they're a poor choice of any kind of tree, as far as I'm concerned at this point. So there is a planting for resilience that's put out by the University of Massachusetts, and I printed the whole thing out. And it's interesting to note that, paraphrasing to some degree now, but trees are becoming increasingly essential for maintaining environmental quality and human well-being in the face of urbanization and climate change. And, this is me, that's them, but we've heard a lot about climate change, and there's a lot of things that people can agree to and disagree with. But there's one thing that's definitely true, and I think everybody will agree with, that trees lower the temperature, they improve the environment, they take carbon dioxide out of the air. They do so many things that that's good for all of us. Currently, the United States, back to their report, is losing 36.2 million urban trees each year. And back to our master plan that we've recently come out with, it states that Abington has a significant canopy coverage, which happens to be 42% of the town of Abington, which compares highly as compared to other towns. And in Massachusetts alone, it is the most urbanized state in New England. So, and if someone needs me to read from the master plan, I can read it to you, but with our code, to have trees planted in yards, I think it emphasizes the importance of trees, and I think it's something we should have. So, that's the research I've done on it. I feel as if that's what we should continue to do. If one neighbor decides they don't want trees, what about the next neighbor? What about the next neighbor? I think it's in the best interest of the town and in the best interest of the people in town. And I'm not one for regulations, but in this particular case, I don't think we should give an exception. But that's my say on it, but I open it up to the board.
Do we have a regulation on street trees?
Yes.
Meaning that you can't cut them down, or you can't adjust them?
No.
Okay. Was that, did that used to be a thing in some communities where if?
Well, in some communities, they usually say that trees over a certain caliber, this is just a few, not every, not universal, but some towns do have a regulation that when they're over a certain caliber, they need to get permission to be cut down. We do not have a regulation such as that in Abington. I'm not necessarily in favor of one of those, but because there are all sorts of things that happen, why you need to take trees down, it's just one more regulation. So, I basically, in the past, have been somewhat imposed to something like that, but that could be a regulation in some towns. It is.
So I guess my concern is, I think we have a larger tree problem in our bylaws. I don't think, I think we need to rework or review what we require, particularly when it's time to start construction and they go in and clear cut a lot. And we have a specific language that says they're not supposed to cut down, basically, anything greater than five inches in diameter, and that they have to do a bare minimum to allow them to do construction. And too often, we're seeing it's just a clear cut, and then they have to go back in and plant after that, and that's not what our bylaws say.
I would agree with you, and I will tell you that the house that I bought a number of years ago had that type of situation. However, they filled in tremendously above it. In fact, some trees, which continued to live, had been covered by over six feet of fill, and they continued to grow, which is unusual, and they happened to be oaks. But the problem, in many cases, are the trees that are on a lot are not necessarily the best kind of trees for a homeowner to have on their property.
Correct.
So that's, and there's, you know, a tree growing in the wild has a lot more growth, crotches and things like this, and can be dangerous and so forth. And I can very much understand how someone would like to have a pine tree taken down that's close to the house, that when you have a storm, it's going to land on the house. So there are a lot of things to take into consideration. And if there's any change in elevations, or drainage, or water table, a lot of these trees that are existing when they get ready to clear the lot cause more problems later on. They don't last that long.
I guess the question as a board that we need to decide is, do we, are we aiming to have developments that look like Colonel Hunt Summit, some of those older established neighborhoods that have a lot of tree canopy? Or are we looking for more of like what we've built more recently, where you have the first 50 feet of the front yard is bare and open, and maybe there's a couple of trees on the side dividing the property lines, and a couple of street trees by the sidewalk? Which, what are we aiming for? What are we trying to accomplish? You know, personally, I kind of like how Colonel Hunt turns out, but that's also after 30, 40 years of growth. But you see a lot more different types of hardwood trees in different spots. It's not just along the street line. I think that's a larger conversation we have to have as a board, but in the meantime, I would agree with you that I would like to plant the trees, and then if the homeowner decides they want to cut them down, then that's their choice.
Yeah, and Colonel Hunt Drive, it was a relatively new project when I came into town, and they took very few trees down. And the people up there did run into a lot of problems with mold, and because, and the sun didn't get at the homes and stuff, and so there was a lot of rotting down up there. So, there were a lot of trees that were there that had been removed, but it's still a fairly nice tree area.
I think you need to look at the overall streetscape of the town. By streetscape, I mean, you know, all the enhancements, whether they be the sidewalks or the trees and stuff like that. And, you know, and I go along with Rick, you see a lot of these new subdivisions, and they hardly have any trees in the yards at all. If it was me, I'd want to have some trees in my yard because I understand the value of it. But I think we need to look at the town as a whole, how the whole town, how everything blends in, try to make everything look, I don't want to say acceptable, because that's a value judgment, but just the appearance, the overall appearance of the town. We live in a suburban town, and I think trees are acceptable in yards, people accept that. So I think that we really do need to have, you know, to continue to have trees in yards as part of our regulation for the benefit of an appearance of the town, make the town look nice as far as the trees and the landscape.
When I looked up, I think it's just, it's plain as, it seems like plain as a nose on my face, they wiped out an entire forest, all the yards are completely clear cut, and to complain about putting a couple of trees in the front of the yard seems to be, you know, complaining about a bush growing someplace. It just seems ridiculous. It doesn't seem fair to the rest of the neighbors that one house would not have continued the treescape all the way around. So my feelings, my vote would be too, that they have to, they have to have the trees, same as everyone else in the neighborhood does. That would be what I would pose.
On this particular situation, what's your position?
We've already reduced the number of trees up there to some degree.
And the reason, if you recall, is the reason we reduced it from three to two was a request of the developer, and in return for that, he was going to resurface some streets that lead to the project, and that was the reason we let them reduce it from three to two.
But also because they have electrical boxes in their driveways, and just dimension-wise, it didn't work?
Well, they certainly might not be in the right exact same space, but it could have been, they could have put three in, depending on what kind of trees, obviously, also.
No, I think it's a good choice with a tree that they changed, that they're going to provide. There are some examples of some neighborhoods that I can see where they've, they've put trees in very tightly, and they've grown to be gigantic lollipops, and that's all you can see is, I mean, the trees just take over the entire road. And I feel bad because somewhere along the line, they're going to have to take the trees down, and that's, just doesn't make any sense to put them in just to go down in 20 years.
I knew regulations have the trees farther back from the road than they used to be. They used to be in the right of way, and now they're actually on the homeowner's.
So, do we need a?
Can we take a vote on these two trees on this particular lot? The rest of it later. What's your draw this?
Did they request that we wait on a decision until their next meeting, or are they okay?
It's fine with me if they would like to be at another meeting. I have no objections to that. I just want to make it, you know.
It was a board's decision to, not the neighbors'.
It was a board's?
It was a board's decision not to take action last night.
Right, it was our board's decision not to take action then, at that meeting, because we wanted to talk about it more, and we had other things on the agenda.
I think we've had this discussion tonight. I think we could draw our conclusion rather than to go another meeting with this. I think we, I mean, I'll make the motion to, to not go along with the waiver of trees to be planted on a lot, to require them to have some trees planted on it.
Motion made.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of having the two trees planted on that particular lot, say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? Is anyone here from 181 Bronken Avenue, Asbou? Yes. Sean?
I'm actually, wasn't aware this was on the agenda this, you get this, so I was talking with you before you arrived. If you could move to the next meeting, I'll have it in writing prepared, a better presentation, I think I'd probably fail miserably to tie with that.
Fine with me, is that all right with the board?
Yes.
Fine, thank you.
February 1st meeting?
February, Sean?
Yeah, February, was it 3rd or whatever?
Being, I've got nothing to read on that, do I? Yes, I do. On 700 Bedford Street. Being set at 6:10, the Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing at Abington Town Offices 500 going its way, Abington, Mass. on Monday, January 6, 2020, at 6:10 PM, on the application of LTC Northeast LLC 53 State Street, 8th Floor, Boston, Massachusetts 02109, for site plan approval pursuant to Abington's zoning bylaws, Chapter 175-77. The property is owned by 700 Bedford Street LLC, 714 Bedford Street LLC, and Chris J. Doughty, Carof Shawn Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 2032, Abington, Mass. 02351. The property is located at 700 Bedford Street, on Accessus Map 456, Lots 112, 6 and 7. Plans can be viewed at the Town Clerk's Office, Wayne P. Smith, Chairman, Advising the Bronken Enterprise, December 23rd and December 30th. Sean, what's your comments?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Attorney Shawn Riley, 500 Washington Street, and I have to apologize in advance, I have some sort of ear infection in my left ear, so I can't hear on the left side right now. If I talk too slowly, too quietly, let me know, or if I have to ask you to repeat something, I apologize. I'm representing the proponents of tonight's project. With me tonight is Mr. John Capolano, who's a Senior VP of Lincoln Properties, along with Shawn Crissom. Also with us tonight in the audience is Ellison Patton from Senior VP, and Mike Foster, also Lincoln Properties. And from our engineering crew from VHB, we have Connor Nagel, the Project Manager, Jeff Black, and Matt Doronley, the Transportation Consultant. The property that we're talking about is actually comprised of three parcels of land, which is referenced in the hearing. It's the Russell Wheatley Building, the, it's been, the Dempsey's Building, the Lampshade Building, and Mr. Doughty's House, which is the first house on the right on Shar Avenue. It's, all three of the properties are located in the Highway Commercial Zone. The line for the Highway Commercial Zone is basically 300 feet off of Route 18. So this property is a commercial proposal and a commercial zone. It's a total of 3.4 acres. There are about 238 feet of frontage down Shar Avenue, and 390 feet of frontage along Route 18. The requirement in this zoning district is to have 20,000 square feet of land minimum and 125 feet of frontage, so with the 238 feet of frontage and 390 feet of frontage, we have much more than necessary frontage. And as far as 20,000 square feet, we have 147,000 plus square feet of land. Just about, just under half of this property, really about half and half, will be green space versus building and pavement. So approximately 73,000 square feet of green space, existing trees and trees to be planted. The proposed use of the premises as a self-storage facility is allowed as of right, meaning we don't need any zoning variances or zoning relief to allow this type of project. And just historically, I think the board is aware, there was a prior proposal on this property, on the Wheatley and the Lampworks property, to put in some residential condominium units. That was not approved by the zoning board. There was another proposal to have a mixed use, where there was going to be a commercial building on Route 18 with some residential uses. To the rear portion, that was not allowed either. This proposal with the storage building is commercial use, which, as I said, does not require zoning approval. It does, however, require site plan review by the planning board to ensure that it's designed as safely, as adequately, as aesthetically as possible, so the business can operate, and it'll be a good benefit as much as possible to not only the immediate neighborhood, but to the town as a whole. This is not a public storage-owned company, this is a separate company. I see, you've seen some of them in other towns, public storage, that's an actual company, public storage. So that Lincoln Properties is not public storage, but it is a similar type of use, meaning that interior storage, usually of household items. There would be one building, which would be three stories tall, which is about 40 feet, 40 feet tall, would be the main building on the corner. And then there'll be a smaller building, much smaller building, setback, which will be shown on the plans, which is only about 20 feet tall. That smaller building would just have a couple of garage bays, where something like an automobile or a boat or something could just pull it in, it could be left there. It is, the, there'll be an office on the corner, at the Shar Avenue Bedford Street corner, landscaping at the corner with a business sign at the corner. The office will have windows on both sides, so they'll be able to see the property, both on the Shar Avenue side and the Bedford Street side. This type of business, we submitted a full traffic report, does not generate much traffic at all because of what it is. People don't come on a daily basis to check on the items that they've stored. The traffic study has shown that typically for this type of use, in rush hour in the morning, we have about six cars come to the building, three of which are probably going to be our employees, or they might have come a little earlier. We usually typically have three employees on site. During rush hour at night, there's usually about eight cars that might be coming, and nine go, eight or nine coming and going during rush hour. So it's, and obviously during the other hours of the day, it's even less than that. We're aware of Shar Avenue's concern, I used to live on Shar Ave when I was a kid, Pinecrest Road, Shar Ave, that it's tough to get out on Route 18, there's a lot of side streets. We don't anticipate this as going to be a traffic generator. With those numbers I just mentioned, the six or seven or eight cars that might come in an hour, we anticipate the majority of those will be used in the Bedford Street entrance and exit. There are two exits and entrances on this property. Right now, these three properties that we're building on have five entrances, five driveways, two on Shar Avenue, and three on Bedford Street. So we're eliminating the three of those five, and just going to keep one on Shar Avenue, which will be about 200 feet away from the intersection, and then the one on Bedford Street, which would be about 350 feet away from Shar Avenue. And both of those are in and out for safety, and also allows fire department access or anything like that. There will be, both streets will be tree lined according to our landscaping plan that we've submitted, and we do have a graphic we can show you later, so there will be planting trees down Shar Avenue, and trees down Bedford Street, along with some trees near the building itself. All the outdoor lighting has to abide by the outdoor site lighting, outdoor lighting bylaw, meaning you can't trespass onto neighbors, you can't have a spotlight shooting at your neighbor, it all has to be downlighting, which this will all comply. And the, no buildings or anything, no construction in the floodplain area, so we don't need to deal with the floodplain. It'll be a brand-new drainage system. The current drainage that's on the Dempsey's property has some underground drainage that goes out to the far northwest part of the property, which is, as the neighbors know, it's kind of the paved parking lot out in the rear. The drainage empties out into the wetlands to the north side, basically kind of aiming towards trupees. But that will continue to be the case, although we are going to replace everything and kind of upgrade it, but the water, everything that falls on this building, or on this driveway, or in any parking area will be collected and go underground, and will go to the north in that same general direction. We've committed, we've submitted a complete set of site plans, the drainage calculations, the traffic impact statement. We will also be going to the Conservation Commission, because the land out back, where we're going to be doing some of these drainage improvements, is within 100 feet of wetlands. It's not necessarily in the wetlands, but it's within 100 feet. So once, we'll be moving on to Conservation Commission, probably in February, for their final review of the plan. They usually like to know that the town's engineer has reviewed the drainage system before they take action. And I know the town engineer, Dave Johnson, has reviewed our plans. Just to review also for the zoning, like I did the zoning, about 49% of, 49.9% of the property would be covered by building or pavement, meaning 50% would be grass, trees, existing trees or trees to be planted. It's a, I think people are familiar with the use of these type of buildings, some people may utilize these type of buildings. There's no hazardous materials allowed in these buildings, you can't put in propane or things like that. There is a drive-through, much like Cape Cod Lumber has a drive-through, there is an area where you, where people can drive into the building and unload their belongings to put it into their storage unit. And the storage units are kind of, can be broken down or expanded, they can be anything between, I think it's 20 square feet to over 400 square feet.
Right.
Depending on what people want to rent. Different uses for different families. We have our entire team here today, tonight, to answer any questions you might have. These gentlemen are, as I said, represent Lincoln Properties and VHB, who I think you all know is a very reputable engineering company, has designed all the engineering and the entire site plan. I know Dave has gone over the plans pretty thoroughly on behalf of the town, and I thought it might be best if we let Dave kind of review what he's seen, and then we can react or answer any questions that might come up after that presentation.
Yep. I don't think you have a copy of the letter. Because of the holidays and people's vacations, we did issue a draft that we sent to Shawn and the design engineer. They're working on addressing a number of those concerns. I think Shawn already addressed some of the comments that we had in our review, such as what was the use of the accessory building to the rear, was parking required for that use of the property. So I'll try to focus in on some of the more significant.
I think you do have the.
Do you have a copy of the draft? Okay. Thank you. So some of the items that we wanted to touch on was, was the parking and the impervious area. There's 27 parking spaces shown on the site, and I think the reason that there's that many shown is to have compliance with the zoning bylaws requirement. From what you see on these type of uses, 27 parking spaces seems to be excessive based upon what the anticipated traffic is here. And in the interest of reducing runoff, and as Wayne said, heat and global warming and all of the stuff that goes along with impervious areas, we're suggesting that the applicant, you know, evaluate, does he really need 27 parking spaces? And if not, suggested that they file for a special permit with the planning board to renew, reduce the number of parking spaces. The other issue, which isn't really highlighted in the review, but on further looking at the project, I just would like the applicant or the engineer to explain the need for the drive aisle on the northerly side of the building, again, in terms of additional pavement, and why that particular area of pavement is necessary. It would appear that access to the accessory building is easily done with the Shar Avenue side of the site, and the reduction in pavement would transmit into less runoff. Part of the reason for that suggestion is the design of the stormwater system, while it's complete, the side slopes of that basin have been designed two to one, and I think DEPs strongly suggested side slope should be three to one. Two to one is relatively difficult to get vegetated and maintained. If the, if the design engineer was required to increase that slope to three to one, it would most likely reduce the volume that's available in that system. So the reduction in pavement, as it relates to the storage facility, quote a current term, there'd be a quid pro quo between the basis, the basin, and the, there'd be a trade-off, less reduction, less requirement for, to deal with the stormwater. The other issue we had, wanted some additional information, and I think, is Vanas still planning on reviewing the plan, was to ask Vanas about the adequacy of the turning radiuses into and out of the site. Right now, they're proposing a 10-foot radius, which is pretty tight, particularly for Bedford Street, considering that you may be having moving-type trucks, larger vans, and whether or not those vehicles could access the site without damaging either the curbing or the sidewalks, excuse me, on either Bedford Street or Shar Avenue. So that's something that Vanas ought to be evaluating. I think Bedford Street, at this point, is considered under Mass Highway for an access permit, and I know they'll have some discussions as to the size of those radiuses, because I think they typically would be looking at 30 feet. So that was another issue that's going to, the answer would have some bearing on the final site design. We discussed the side slopes within the basin. The other issue related to grading is the side slopes for the driveway access on both the north and west side, which adjacent to residences or additional property, is that the two-to-one side slope, again, as I said, is difficult to establish and maintain, and so the runoff from those slopes are being directed onto the, and we're suggesting that the applicant's engineer look at a way to mitigate any of that runoff getting onto the adjacent properties, either through a grass swale, an infiltration trench, capturing it in a catch basin or lawn drain, to mitigate that and prevent any runoff from those slopes being directed onto the abutting property. One of the things in the landscaping plan that Wayne, I'll direct to you, is the number and the spacing of the white pine. And so the, the runoff from those slopes are being directed onto the, and we're suggesting that the applicant's engineer look at a way to mitigate any of that runoff getting onto the adjacent properties, either through a grass swale, an infiltration trench, capturing it in a, in a catch basin or lawn drain, to mitigate that and prevent any runoff from those slopes being directed onto the abutting property. One of the things in the landscaping plan that Wayne, I'll, I'll direct to you, is the number and the spacing of the white pine on, on the landscaping plan. My understanding is white pine is great when it's first planted, but as it grows up, the understory is no longer acting as a, a barrier, they're brittle, and the spacing seemed to be quite, quite close for a white pine, and that maybe additional planting types ought to be evaluated around the site to get a more permanent buffer to the abutting properties. The gravel wetland stormwater basin is fairly elaborate, and there's some extensive plantings that are a functional part of that basin to treat the stormwater. And our suggestion is to, as part of the bonding for the project, establish a, a minimum of a two-year bond to ensure that that wetland vegetation is well-established, since it is such a significant part of the treatment terrain for, for the stormwater. The final item is, relates to the town, Shaw Avenue Public Way, and that there should be a detail provided on the plans for how they're going to restore the pavement surface in the public way, and also how the existing utilities to the, the three uses are going to be capped and abandoned, so that we, the town knows well in advance how that's going to be addressed. There is a sign, I believe, shown on the Shaw Avenue entrance. The board should consider requiring that to be an exterior lit sign with some type of timer on it to reduce any visual light impacts on the remaining residents of Shaw Avenue. So that kind of focuses in on the issues that the planning board should be aware of. There are several drainage and stormwater issues, which the board doesn't really need to address at this time. They'll be addressed between the design engineer and, and engineering in advance of next meeting.
Thank you, Dave. We have some letters from the Abington Public Works. The Abington Sewer Department has reviewed your requests for information regarding the planning board hearing scheduled January sixth, 2020, and has the following comments. This proposal located on Assessors Map four, five, four, six, Lot one, one, two, six, and seven must be approved by the Board of Sewer Commissioners at a regularly scheduled meeting. And from the Board of the Treasurer, there are no issues. Does the public have anything they wish to ask about? Yes, ma'am. And could you, give us your name and address, please?
Yes. My name is Catherine Brown, and I am a resident here of Abington. I live directly across the street from fifty-three Shaw Avenue and eighty-four Shaw Avenue.
And right up front, I want to apologize. It was a clerical error that, from the zoning department, the Assessors Department, that failed to send, to address a letter to you, and I apologize for that.
Right. I received the letter, and so that, I, I live with my son-in-law and his wife and children. I'm in the in-law apartment. So we just got word of all of a sudden a change. And apparently, from my understanding, there is a storage shed going to be erected at the site of fifty-three Shaw Avenue. Is that correct? I'm having trouble hearing you gentlemen.
Well, yes. Well, actually, there, there are two buildings. There's one major building that will be out in front on the corner, and then there'll be a small storage shed on the side in the back. Someone can probably show her that on the map.
This is Rob. The, this is the proposal. So Mr. Dowey's house, right here, Mr. Dowey's house will be raised.
Whose house is going to be raised?
Uh, Mr. Dowey. The first house, fifty-three Shaw Avenue.
Yes, the right across, Chris's.
Yeah, Chris Dowey. His house will be right in here.
Okay. Is this Shaw Avenue or here?
Yep, this is Shaw Avenue. This is Route eighteen, down the line.
Oh, right, okay.
Your house is right here. Right, this is the law office, and then you're right there.
I'm right here.
Yeah. There's another view of it. That's your house right there, first house on the left.
Yes, correct.
And that's Chris's house right there.
Yes, and, and this is going to be an exit?
Yeah.
I understand?
Correct.
Which is, but caused no problems for me.
I understand what you're, you're concerned. I don't think, well, I know that this is not going to be generating a lot of traffic. You've got right now.
We can agree to disagree.
Well, yeah.
My, my concern is basically, there is a elderly housing on that same side of the street, just a short way down. And we have people who live in, uh, there, that are wheelchair-bound, and those poor things are trying to get down the trukies, or they're trying to get over to the bank. That left-hand side has a sidewalk. My side does not, so that's their only access to get to or from. And with that driveway coming out that exit, my concern is they're not going to be seen, because you're not talking cars here, you're talking trucks that are going to go.
You're not seeing a van, are you?
Yeah, but I mean, let's face it, if you're going in to a building bringing.
Oh, yeah.
Stuff, you're going to have a truck rather than a, a standard car. So that's going to be bigger, it's going to cause more problems. And I think we have enough of a problem out on Route eighteen and Shaw Avenue right now. I've seen all too many accidents. You can't get out onto eighteen, whether, whatever way you go. This is certainly not going to discourage it, it's going to cause more problems. So that's an issue. The other problem I, I find is that you've got the children coming from schools, whether it's middle school, high school, they come down Shaw Avenue. You know, children, they don't pay attention. So you're going to have issues there. You have a great big three-story building here, and that building is going to obstruct whatever view you do have, trying to get out there in the first place. It's aesthetically, it's certainly not going to be conducive to the area. I thought we were trying to hang on to some of the history and the historical buildings in the area, and at least keep it within some kind of a parameter, but apparently that's all changed.
Let me answer a few things.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. You won't obstruct any views. The, the buildings are set back off the street, forty, fifty feet off the street, even further from Shaw Avenue, as you can see from here. The, there are also, I'm not, I'm assuming you're, there's another entrance on, on Bedford Street, which we anticipate the majority of traffic is going to Bedford Street, because that's where the majority of traffic is. Obviously, if someone else is on the corner, wherever Shaw Avenue wants to utilize the building, they're not going to go up to Bedford Street, they'll use the Shaw Avenue entrance. Likewise, when you're exiting, it's going to be, you know, easier for some people to take the turn out on Bedford Street than to go on to Shaw Avenue and then take another turn out on Bedford Street. They go either way, they're going to have similar issues, no doubt about it, no matter what is built here, pulling out on Route eighteen during rush hour is tough, no matter where you are on Route eighteen, no doubt about it.
Well, I think, I think the size of the building, three levels, that's, we already have, what, at least two storage areas in the area already.
There's one down, Wayne, that floor. This, this building is about the same height as the, the existing lampworks building.
Where, which building?
The, the Darcy building, the, the woods, the big wooden building.
Oh, yes, okay.
It's been, not, number of names.
Do you have an exterior rendering of the building to, to put up there?
No, we have, we submitted that with your.
No, so they can. So the crowd can see what it looks like.
The other thing is, what effect does that bring on the water table? You're digging up all that soil, and you couldn't cement in, so it's going to have some effect, I would assume, on the water table. I don't know, I may be completely wrong, but I would assume that we have some, some bearing on it.
The, the, this entire site is designed, as I mentioned, with brand-new drainage system. Everything's being upgraded to current DEP standards, and the engineers here would be kind of, so if I misspeak, please correct me.
So if there's a problem, I can come to you guys when I have the water drains coming to my side?
Well, just so you're, just so you're aware, it is designed, that anywhere there's a building, when the rain hits grass, it gets absorbed by grass. When the rain hits the building on the pavement, it needs to go somewhere.
Right.
So the engineers have designed us so that anything that lands basically on our pavement or on our building is going to go this way through the, the existing, there already is a retention area up here now, it is being upgraded to meet current standards now. We also have the towns engineer, who is reviewing our engineers' work to make sure that that's the case. If, we're not allowed to build anything that would create a new drainage problem, or worse, an existing drainage problem, the, frankly, the board can't approve it, if that's the case. So we have to show that we either keep things the same or improve them.
That's what the building is going to look like, that, that's pictured up there.
Yeah, which is certainly not, to me, it's not, it's not keeping with the historical complexity of the, of the town. I thought that that was part of what Abington was about, the historical buildings and, and areas to celebrate and communicate.
I got a question.
Thank you. Yes, could we have, could we, sir, could we have your name and address, please?
Thomas Tashin, one thirty Shaw Ave. What is this security thing? Is there going to be a fence along the entire perimeter? Is it going, is the fence going to come up to the sidewalk? In other words, when I'm coming up Shaw Ave, right now, right, we can't, a, a Spelman open house sign one day out front, and it almost caused twelve accidents, because we pulled up, you're coming up on an incline, because Route eighteen is at a higher elevation than the water path, than Shaw Ave, who comes up on incline, you're looking down the street, and a sign this big was an impediment to seeing down the street, trying to get out onto eighteen.
Yes, it's best to my knowledge, there is no fences, there are no fences proposed at this time.
Why not?
There's two, well, there's fences with our residential neighbors. So there's a fence here between Mr. Adams' house.
Yeah.
There's a fence here that stops, our bylaws require a fence to stop twenty feet before the street line, and the street line doesn't necessarily be the pavement, it's behind the sidewalk, so it's got to stop twenty feet behind that sidewalk, or it can stop ten feet behind it, as long as the fence tips down to a four foot, so you can see it over, see over it easily. And likewise, there'll be another fence over here in Mr. How's house, Mr. How's house. So there'll be a fence behind him and a fence next, along with trees. We've, we've tried to keep the trees that exist on, on or next to the Adams' property, and then we're adding more trees along here, adding more trees along here, out back here, and then we're required to plant the street trees also along both streets.
Are you raising or lowering the elevation of the property conducive to Route eighteen or to Shaw Ave?
So that's the answer to that.
It'll be a little bit lower than the parcel or the existing commercial business on the corner there. Our proposed finish grade is about, you know, it's a two, three feet lower than what that, two or three feet lower than Route eighteen, or two or three feet lower than Shaw Ave, to get that to the corner, to the valley side. So the, this is sort of the, the high point here. Our finish grade is going to be equivalent with Bedford Street around here, so it'll be a little bit higher on, on this side, you know, it'll be a little bit lower on this side, but.
So there's going to be a drop-off from the street?
I wouldn't say it's a drop-off, it's, you know, maybe a four percent, three percent grade from sort of this corner down into the street.
And, and, there's a button.
So the north, the north end of the lot, you're going to rise, you're going to have to fill, south end of the lot, you're going to drop.
It's kind of like that now, as you know, Mr. Wheatley's driveway is down there.
It is, to a thing, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Get it, and, and the understanding of, on the street, is there going to be, are you going to raise it, are you going to lower it, on the street, the house to the back? Is there going to be a, like, raising of theirs, in other words, or decaying of their property?
Yeah, just to give you a visual, like, this.
You have all small runoff problems, problem, and they mean accidents.
This garden area here is about three feet above the pavement area, and so there's going to be, going to use that to kind of drop down to the pavement. As you know, if you step on, if you were on the Route eighteen sidewalk and walked onto Wheatley's property, you looked out, Route eighteen's higher. So we're going to have the grass kind of bring us down to the pavement, okay?
Yeah.
Hopefully, I think that answers what you're saying.
Isn't the right.
We have to basically work with the fact that the property is higher over here now and lower down here now, so we kind of have to blend that in. Catch all the water, which goes underground and moves this way.
Isn't there a hill in the middle of Wheatley's property? The building is three to four feet higher than the sidewalk.
Yeah, there'll be, um, yes, everything's going to be pitched to catch basins. I'll, I'll, I hate going into much more detail than that, and maybe you can tell us.
Well, my, I guess my concern, I don't, and I'm sorry to jump in, jump in here, is how much earth is going to be moved on this site? Is, is there going to be a net addition or subtraction from this site?
I think it ultimately would be a balanced site, so there would be no earth leaving or coming onto the site.
But there'll be a lot kind of being pushed around and moved around?
Yeah, moved around and flattened out.
Is there any concern that there's ledge underneath there, that that's why you have that hill?
Uh, there has, there was three borings done, there is showing some ledge more back here in the site. There was, you know, ledge probably, I think it was three to six feet below grade, so there is a little bit, but not, not a huge concern. Ultimately, it's going to be a balanced site, everything will stay on the.
This is Jeff, Jeff.
Oh, yeah. Jeff Black, PHB.
Any other questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Paul Voight, two twenty eight Shaw Ave. When the traffic study was done, did you take into account all of the people that ignore the cut-through on crab trees that supposedly for emergency vehicles only, but especially be there before the kids go to school and when they're leaving? There are, there are cars flying up and down Shaw Ave, and you know they're all cutting through. And probably more importantly, as soon as they're done with that big project from Route three to one thirty-nine, there's going to be a lot more traffic on this part of Route eighteen. It's going to be a lot more difficult to get out of Shaw Ave, and probably the high school and a few others, but the high school at least has a satellite. If we get a satellite at Shaw Ave, it'll probably take care of some of our issues, but you have to keep in account, when that four lanes gets complete down here, people are going to go, great, I can get out Route eighteen, it'll be great, and it's going to cause a lot more issues right where we live.
Do we have something on? The traffic report looked at two things. There's a Traffic Institute manual, which dictates first what you should anticipate for any type of building. If this was a restaurant, if this was residential, if this was a storage building. And then it kind of basically looks, how big is the building, how big is the site, and it gives you calculations that you should expect X amount of traffic during the day. So, and it's usually very conservative. We had to do that with the school building, we do it with everything, any commercial or multi-family building. This project also has the benefit, though, that VHB is, has actual data from two other storage buildings in Massachusetts that are actually larger than this, so they had actual traffic counts, too. And they were able to compare what the Traffic Institute manual suggested that you should design for, and then what's the actual use of the property. In both cases, the actual use was, was significantly below what the design standard is. And they mentioned kind of it earlier, like, our zoning bylaws require twenty-seven parking spaces. We won't need half of that, and we'd like to discuss that with the board. But we have to design it that way and show it that way. And as I mentioned before, in rush hour in the morning, we expect eight cars to come during that, during that hour.
Right, but I just want to make sure those eight cars are coming off of Bedford Street and not coming through the cut-through in Shaw Ave. And there's no way you guys can guarantee that.
No, you, you can't, but, I mean, just common sense would believe that the majority of traffic, because the traffic is on Bedford Street, will be entering our property from Bedford Street. If someone decides, sure, if they, you know, were coming this way and wanted to take the turn on Shaw Avenue, because they knew there was an exit, yeah, they could do that theoretically, but the signage is out here. Mr. Johnson mentioned that there was a sign shown over here, I, I think that's being eliminated, because we're allowed to have the one up here. That, that showed on one plan, and it wasn't, it was deleted on the other sheets. So the traffic study that was done basically uses the worst-case scenario. So, the traffic study that was done basically uses the worst-case scenarios. And then we also included the actual data to show that we're very confident what our numbers are calculated to be. In addition to VHB's work, the board has hired another traffic engineer to review their engineer traffic study. And we expect that gentleman to be present at the February 3 meeting. So, we're probably talking in more detail on the 3rd about that.
Yeah, I mean, if you're dealing with a traffic situation, you know as well as I do, that if you're not here and you know there's an exit on the North Park Street that you don't have to deal with the 139 lights and stuff, you're gonna do that, and they're gonna cut down Sharav. They're gonna come through that emergency access because there's no, nothing blocking them from doing it.
No, I know.
You know, I don't fault them, I mean, because it's a no-brainer in a lot of cases.
And I know it's a high-button issue in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I don't dare cut through there because everyone knows about license plate. I know what you mean, but this, the traffic is based on very conservative...
No, I realize there'll only be few cars and all that, but we don't need any more, period. But I understand what you're saying.
The other part of the design to consider, and why it was, as you know, Russ Wheatley's driveway is pretty much, you turn on Sharav, you turn into his driveway, it's a zigzag drive. I think Mr. Wheatley's driveway is a little further back. We intentionally put this entrance as far away from the intersection as possible. As I mentioned, it's just over, I think it's 200, 200 feet, more than 200 feet up here. And if a car is 20 feet long, that means you can line up 10 cars, you know, hopefully you don't get in that situation, but I know this time there's three or four, and you're waiting, right? So, you shouldn't have a conflict with somebody kinda blocking the road because they can't get out through the line of traffic. That's why it was moved back here.
Are there any other comments? Yes, sir.
Josh, thanks for your question. So, why are you considering an access off of Sharav? This is a big commercial building. Why would we inconvenience the residents of that neighborhood? As you said, like, oh, some of that, it did eight people through rush hour. What about not during rush hour? When it's, during rush hour, we're stacked up, six, seven cars deep. It takes me five minutes to get out of my street in the morning. And now you're gonna need one more car to that. Now it's seven minutes, eight minutes. Now, there's a box truck halfway out. Why are we even out of here? So, you have 300-plus feet of frontage on Bedford Street. Why are we involving Sharav? Never mind the fact, the buildings that I saw, you know what I mean, I just bought a house there. If I had to come down, if I was gonna buy that house again, I'd probably buy it in another neighborhood. You know what I mean? It's not gonna directly hurt my property value, but when it comes to someone buying my house or the other guy's house, they're gonna pick the other guy's, because, you know what I mean, it ruins the neighborhood as far as I'm concerned. On top of the traffic situation, it's already a dangerous intersection. At least that is, so I see why we need to include Sharav in that entrance. We said people aren't gonna be using it anyways. Why, why have it? Why not pick a bigger entrance in the front where these big box trucks dealers can get in, in and out, no problem, you know what I mean?
That's one of the reasons we're here tonight, site plan review, to look at the design, to hear the comments from the appus, to hear the comments from the engineers, from the planning board. Typically, you would want two means of access. Fire chief has had a night, he can speak to that later if he wants. It's just a typical design to try to have that second one. We don't anticipate, the impact of, you know, not many people are gonna turn out this building, though, down Sharav, unless you live there, obviously. So, we don't anticipate that. The extra queue, the extra person who joins that queue, you mentioned, you know, if it's, if it's eight cars at rush hour, what's it at the next hour? It's less. We, the traffic study has to look at the worst part of the day and design for that. So, when I say this...
What is the threshold of those? So, say, say rush hour, there's six, seven cars on Sharav, you're at rush hour either way. Let my people going in and out, you know what I mean? You're on that on top of it. But now, you know, in new time, I pull out, and I can have a box truck, another car, like, how many cars is it gonna add in off-hours that maybe before it was maybe one of my neighbors in front of me? Now, like, three people from the storage facility in front of me, or like I said, now I have a box truck in front of me, while they're trying to pull in and out. So, I guess it's already a dangerous intersection. People cutting across, coming in, it's awful. And with 18 now, people flying out, it's just terrible. And now we need to choose all these bigger vehicles that are gonna be competing with all the people that live on the street just for additional access that you say won't even get used that much? It won't be used that much, then just why not move it?
I'm saying, we...
I'm just getting back on that, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you will interrupt, I think so, we're waiting to get through.
We would, I'm not saying it's not gonna use that much, it's gonna use as much as Bedford Street, obviously, because Bedford Street has 23, 25,000 cars a day going up and down, we all know that. So, obviously, it's more convenient for those people to turn in here, you know, and people usually go back out the same way they can, they're familiar with it. But that is there as the second point of access. Be more utilized by neighbors and maybe townies who kinda know it's another place.
I mean, I'll take my chances if I don't even use storage to have easier access. I'll pull on 18 pulling, I'll take my chances rather than having vehicles to my street.
Especially with Route 18's development and also 139, I think we're gonna see a lot of the houses that have been on Route 18 get replaced with commercial development on Route 18. It's owned for that, the traffic, businesses go where traffic is, because it's their customer base. So, you're gonna see more of this happening up and down.
So, that is the one term to say that, you know, 18 widens out another lane. Is this Sharav access, or when they put a light on Sharav, now people can take a right down Sharav and get into the facility because now they've approached another 10, 20 feet? This little grass area there, is that gonna be gone when they widen 18 to double lanes at Sharav? Because right now, it stops at Trukey's, that's only one lane, but when this goes two lanes, how far into that storage facility are we gonna go? Are they gonna lose that entrance, so now, or it's not gonna be an ideal entrance anymore, so now you use the Shar end, the Sharav side to come in, or?
To my knowledge, that is just a dream right now of Mass Highway, you know, more...
I mean, eventually, though, it's...
Yeah. I mean, let me back up one second. We design everything outside the layout of the state owns. So, again, the state owns more than what the pavement is, they own beyond that. So, the lot line that we show is, is the state's property line, not necessarily the pavement line, okay? So, yeah, they could move, you know, widen in what they already have owned, what they already own right now.
I would say, in that situation, now, is that Sharav access the primary access, because it's probably gonna be light. There's seven, seven, four lanes, you know, there's no way we're not gonna, you can't get off, you can't get out now.
Hey, I would assume 15 and 20-ish.
So, now, when that happens, now they're gonna all be going down to get into this facility, because it's easy to come, come up, take the lap, go in the light. Now, everybody's going down Sharav side, anybody going north on 18 is taking Sharav to get in there. You know what I mean? Now, like, oh, they like going that way, too. Maybe they come out that way and they sit at the light, rather than just going out of the front and having to wait for traffic. So, now we have all these people stacked up on Sharav again. I didn't say you say, oh, maybe 15, 20 years, I mean, who knows? It could be 10 years from now, I don't know. You can't say it's not coming. I'm surprised they haven't already done, you know, what they're doing now, but that's my concern, is I just don't understand why we're putting this massive commercial building and then still adding access to a residential street. We have the ability to redo this whole lot, we'll be buying all this stuff, why not just leave Sharav out of it? Put something on the side that gave us a pass this building, you know what I mean?
I think we've covered this as much as we can cover it. I ventured a guess, and I don't wanna get really involved in it, but we probably had more cars coming out of there with the existing facilities that are presently there than we will have with this facility. So, I just pass that on to you, and I think you'll find that to be true. And I know we could, we could...
This is the one chance we have something to do about it, and if we don't, it's...
I understand that. We've heard what, we've heard what you have to say, and we certainly take it all into consideration. And, but we do, we need to get out of here before at 1:00 in the morning. Yes, sir, you're next.
I just wanted to piggyback off what this gentleman was saying. I live at Chrisnell at 84 Shaw, right across the street from this proposed monstrosity. And you think it's not gonna be minimal traffic, but again, it's already tough getting out of that street. And you have kids that use that as a cut-through to get to the, to the middle school and high school. You have the apartment complex down the road that has a lot of elderly people that have scooters, wheelchairs, that use the only sidewalk, which is on that side of the street. And, you know, I've got my kids go to school at two different times, we got us working at different times. So, if I have a backlog of people trying to get in there, it's gonna be hard for me to get out of my driveway in the morning.
I would suggest to you that there will be something built here. And I will suggest to you that it'll be a lot more traffic than what was presently proposed.
There's been no traffic on that road, so I don't understand what you're saying about that.
Well, I, I went to the Wheatley establishment on many occasions. A lot of other people did. There's also a house that was there that was creating traffic. I'm telling you that this situation is very minimal traffic. Almost anything else that we build there will have more traffic than what they will have. I just pass that out to you. You can disagree with me, and that's fine, but...
Can you ask me the question? What's the reason why you can't have both exits on 18, an entrance and an exit? And you have to drive around the building like you can, so people can come in one way and go it out the other, like Trukey's or whichever, you have it, you know, or make them entrance and exit on both of them, but what I would still want to say is that...
Well, I can assure you, I go in and out of Trukey's quite often, and you know what it's like, so this is no comparison.
Can I answer that up quickly?
Yes.
One of the reasons, to answer that, is if you put a driveway here and a driveway here, let's say, now you've got a driveway too close to the intersection. So, you got people coming down and gonna turn, and you're not sure if they're turning in here or if they're turning in there. That causes more hazards than pulling the driveway away from the intersection and having the second one away from the intersection. That's one of the big reasons why you don't put too much on Route 18.
Yes, chief.
I've actually got about 10 questions, if you don't mind.
You go right ahead.
Actually, I had nine, but, boy, this was brought up. What I think is gonna happen, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I have, I live in town, and I know the theory as well, with common sense. I think if this is happening up here, people are gonna come through here and cut through and get out this way. So, with that being said, from the fire department standpoint, you might wanna widen this entrance exit and close this one off, because I think that's gonna end up happening eventually anyway, just because you're gonna have more of the traffic hazard up here, because everybody's gonna cut right through, they go up. So, that's something to consider, you may wanna just widen this one for us, perhaps close that off, that might settle a lot of issues here, and that still gives us access to prevent somebody from sneaking through here, which they're all gonna do, they're sneaking up to get rid of it. That's just my opinion. Number of questions I have is, it's hard to read the dimensions on here, so I just wanna make sure I get these right. Goes 135 feet long and 240 feet wide, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, when you're gonna drive through here, this is a complete drive-through, this is not a dead end?
Correct.
Now, most of my questions are more kinda fire-activity-wise, not really the land or anything like that. I think you folks have all covered that well. So, I'm more concerned about if we actually get a fire incident in this building, how we're gonna deal with it. Somebody said you have built similar properties already? You know where they are?
All sorts of commercial properties.
Okay. Do you have anything similar to this anywhere in the Commonwealth?
No.
That we could research, okay, that's fine. So, when you drive through here, what do you envision? How is this gonna work? Somebody drives through here, I'm assuming this is to get him out of the weather, they can unload. What size vehicle are you planning on having inside the facility?
The height.
The height. We have it set up that it's the, it's 12 by 14.
That's the door?
That's the door.
Both doors, front and back?
Correct.
Okay, so you're gonna get full-size, you're gonna get the full-size U-Haul vehicles like that?
Correct.
Now, when they get in here, and this is 30 feet wide, I think, so it's basically two lanes, it's like a two-lane room. They come in here, they park somewhere, where do they drop the stuff? How does that work?
They usually pull over, there's gonna be an elevator.
Okay.
So, they're gonna pull up to the elevator?
Freight elevator?
Freight elevator, correct. And they'll go right there, park the vehicle there, unload their belongings, and then go right back out.
The freight elevator goes up all three floors?
That is correct.
One elevator?
I believe, I believe there's two.
Yeah, I think it was one on each side.
One on either side.
Okay. How many total units you have planned to have in there?
That far? There could be 500.
Okay.
Depends on small, they have a lot, I'd say.
I'm just kidding, it depends on how you break it down. Our main concern is if we get a fire in this building, this is like the Worcester warehouse?
Right.
Yes and no? It's apples and oranges in all fairness, I'm not trying to get fear of you, because this would be a modern, fully sprinkled building.
Correct.
However, even with a sprinkled building with that much fire load, that creates smoke, and sprinklers actually make cold smoke, which, smoke goes to the ground, and for us, it's very dangerous. It becomes a maze. That's why I'm somewhat comparing this to the Worcester storage warehouse, because the conditions will be similar. So, because of that, and what we require in Cape Cod lumber, it's a massive smoke evacuation system that would have to be in this building. It's the code anyway, but we may even go beyond that because we're a small fire department. And this is a very large facility that we're gonna have to try to be responsible for. So, there may be some tweets with the fire code on this. You know, CN pipes are in the building, maybe above and beyond. I just wanna get this in the planning right up front early, so that later on, you guys have heard it up front. Couple other questions I have, and then I'll pass this on. So, the overhead doors, you said were 12 by 14?
14, correct.
Thank you. Three floors of the elevator. What other doors do you have? When you're rendering, I can understand it's just a, an artist rendering, are these actual doors or...
Yes.
Decreted doors? Because some facilities have decorative doors.
No, those are actual doors to somebody's unit.
Just an individual unit, and then when you drive in, it'll be on either side?
Yep.
Off your floors?
Correct.
What about your emergency exits from the other floors? You must have a smoke stairwells, how many stairwells are in here?
There are two, I think, the one and I, either one. There is a corridor off that right lane on either side that has the elevator and entrances to units and a stairwell.
Well, you may not have got that deep, this is just the initial series, I can see in that, but you must have an idea what you wanna do. The back building, and this was 90 by 30, what do you plan on storing in that? And how many floor, how many...
It'll probably, we envision that to be about, I think, 15, 16 feet tall, so it could be...
Just one wide-open garage?
One wide-open, but we're gonna cut them up into bays. So, there'll probably be two, maybe three bays.
What do you anticipate, so, is this all garage doors here, or how is that gonna work?
Yes, garage doors will be in the front, correct.
All right, so it's all, almost like there's one massive garage with doors on it?
That's correct.
And individual bays going in?
That's correct.
All right, and that's only 30 feet? Okay, so, almost like people are gonna park boats, RVs, large items like that?
Correct.
And this is also sprinkler?
Yes, it is.
I believe that's it.
Chief, is the 12 by 14 SASS, or is it larger? You can let me know.
Yeah. That's large enough to get our equipment in here? I don't know if we'd actually ever get our equipment in here, looking at the dimensions, but that gives me an idea of what type of vehicles we're gonna have, and you're gonna have full-size vehicles in there. And again, we just, we're looking at it, if we get a vehicle in here, and like, if there's a fire, whether it's a passenger vehicle or a U-Haul vehicle, that is a massive incident for us. That's a sprinkled building or not, that is a massive incident. Fill this building with that much fire and smoke. And we'll discuss stand pipes as well, as I said, and things like that, but, okay.
Any other questions? That happens, Cole? Yes?
Yes?
Yes, please.
Hello, everyone. So I am the lucky person that lives right next door to the property. And after everything you've just mentioned, now I have some concerns.
Could you speak up a little, Leanne, thanks?
Oh, okay. So, since I live right next door, and I have a list of a few concerns that I wanted to ask about. Like, the gentleman that came to my house, I don't know, six months ago, we sat down and talked about different things, and I remember as clear as day, one of the things that I had pointed out was, I don't think it's gonna go over well having an entrance on Shar Avenue. And here we are, and it seems to be going over very well. But at one point, he said, like, you know, maybe ten cars would be trying to get out between the eighteen and, you know, my driveway area. I never actually really counted them, but I don't think it would be ten. It wouldn't even be that many. It's just gonna make the traffic so much worse than it already is, or, you know, it is that for the children, so the wheelchair, it's too resistant, they have to park from Shar Avenue, use them, the marketing, and when you're talking about the elevation and how that is going to be, it's higher. I know that you guys did an awesome job, there's a happy end, as far as, you know, where the water goes, you know, being on the ground, but I would really like to see that and understand it a little bit more. Currently, depending on the rainstorm, I have pictures, I can, sometimes we're doing a school down there, using that water problem in my yard. And since the gentleman in my house, we have a rainstorm down, and I don't know if there's a, but it just, there were like waves right in front of the path, but when the cars were driving, sort of water was passing over there. I don't know about how they would be able to help us out and keep the traffic back. And the store in the back, with the days? I didn't get all the line slightly, but how do you guarantee, so if somebody had said that there wouldn't be any fuel or anything in the storage, how do you guarantee, like, if those, if they're parking boats and campers and such back there, they're gonna have fuel in them, aren't they?
Yeah, there would, there would be whatever was fuel present in those vehicles, but they can't, you can't use it to store, you know, potentially become.
Form ten propane tanks, yeah.
But, if you have those types of things back there, and that is probably the most of the wooded area would be back there, that's, that would nothing but, if there was an accident with that?
Yeah, I mean, believe me, the owners don't want any incidents or accidents either. I mean, so, you know, this building is gonna be, have, well, you have fire sprinkler systems, smoke evacuation systems, all that, like any commercial building would be required to have now. This is a different type of use, so they have different fire safety codes for this type of use. And approval yet to height does not mean we get a building permit. Then the architectural plans have to get submitted, and they will be reviewed for both building code regulations, fire safety code regulations, you know, all, this is a multiple-step process.
And that, that is a concern of mine, because it looks like it's a big distance, but it isn't, it isn't, you know, you've got campers and RVs and all that stuff back there. And like, I've never witnessed a store, so I didn't know that, so what kind of fumes come from there? You know, like it.
It's, how can I explain? I mean, I park my car in my garage in my house, the fumes, the fumes are great when you're running the engine, so I don't think that's gonna be too much of a concern to us.
And I'm talking to, I'm also talking about where these box trucks and moving vehicles, like all these things come in.
Mm-hmm. Chief, that's your particular situation. This is your house right here, okay? All the parking is on the opposite side of the building. There are no door, no garage doors on your side of the building. And this, you can see we have the solid fence and the trees here to screen it, both with this fence and with trees. Any lights over here for security, have downlights, they can't shine towards you. So, here, I mean, these guys can tell you, when they first met with me, I said, you have to take care of the neighbors as much as you can, because, you know, we are in a commercial zone next to residential neighbors. So that's why we have a public here, to try to address what you can. They try to do with, I mean, I can't even count the number of trees in there, but they're trying to do as much as they can so that when you look out here and there, you're gonna see as much tree and fence and not, you know, you're not gonna see if we pick our trucks right through there. I understand, you know, living next to a commercial zone has its ups and downs, most would say downs, but that's.
Don't get me wrong here, I mean, I, something is going to go there eventually.
Right.
Is this the last?
Well, as I said, you're fully aware, well, we proposed, a different client proposed something differently, and it was gonna be a much more of a higher traffic area. This is a restaurant, which is allowed as a right. You would have not only more traffic, but you'd have traffic until midnight, you know,
If I understand that, I appreciate that, and I, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering. When you came to the house, that was very much appreciated. It's just like, just a few of the things that we talked about, when I'm looking at the plans, it looks like we never had the conversation. So, makes me a little nervous, you know, sitting here tonight, whatever you guys are saying, is that really how, you know, we talked about the fencing, we talked about the Shar Avenue entrance, and the fencing doesn't match our conversation, and the Shar Avenue entrance, etc.
Leanne, what about the fence do you want specifically? I wasn't part of conversations, I hope, right?
Yeah, we, I mean, again, I'd like to hear you say, but what is this gonna look like, you know, with the, with the fence? And we talked about a certain guy said a steel fence or whatever, or whatever fence, you know, which you didn't like the fence, and, but it says in the plans, the stuff he, I don't know how much that stuff comes down to it, but if it does, I think this works basically.
Yeah?
And then again, the, but the Shar Avenue, and that's just, my opinion is that you guys want this to be a positive thing, you wanna work with the neighborhood and with the neighbors, not just, I mean, this whole area, there's several little cul-de-sacs and there are people that are gonna be affected by this. That might be one of the things you wanna start with, is to have a real job.
What I might suggest is, since your traffic review engineer is coming on February third.
I think a lot of the traffic questions should be better answered when he is.
I think maybe we can kind of put that on hold, and let's address it when both engineers are here and everyone, we back on the.
I would agree.
Well, if I could interrupt for a second, because I've been looking at the grades, the bottom of the fence will be five feet higher than your driveway. The top of the fence is another six feet higher than that. The top of the building is ten feet taller than Chris Dowdy's building is right now. And, and lighting is seventeen, or seventeen and a half feet off the ground, which puts it almost twenty-five to thirty feet above your driveway. It kind of shows that the light doesn't go anywhere, but it's impossible for the light for not to be seventeen feet off the ground and not project over a six-foot fence that's already five feet over the size of your prop. The property next to Chris's will be filled in. It'll be filled in up to, almost to his driveway, and then there'll be a big swoop coming down. That's the concern they're talking about, picking up the drainage of both sides. But without a doubt, the fence isn't gonna block anything, and the lighting is definitely gonna light up your yard from one, you know, from all the way around. The back area, they're using wall packs that are also, they're fifteen feet off the ground. They're, again, they're gonna beam off, you'll be able, basically, maybe the light won't bleed, but you'll be able to look at the light fixture. Light fixture itself, you'll be able to see the elements of the LEDs. The, but, I don't want you to be, you know, that is what is happening on your end over there. It's a concern I have about all the lighting in this building, but one thing, it's definitely right, it's a very passive building. It's gonna sit there and just look like it looks. Hopefully, I have some questions regarding that, but, but essentially, it is, it is a, I mean, you're absolutely right. Out of everything that could go there, I mean, I think a nicer building up on Route Eighteen, they just built next to the Health Express, is a more appropriate scale for where we are at. But that's a whole different kind of business, and it brings, it is all retail, and then you're talking about trips in and out. The only, the plus thing I could say about this is that it is a, it is a very stationary, very, it just sits there most of the time. But also, I could take a step beyond my preview, is that, not preview, is that second entrance, that was one of the questions I was going to have in here, is that with so little traffic, unless there was need for a fire engine to be able to get through there, why would there be a second entrance off of Shar Avenue? But when I had first looked at it, it is gonna be very, if anything's driving on it, it's mostly just gonna be vacant asphalt beside your driveway. I do have concerns down the back, 'cause that building down the back is a conditioned building, which means, I guess, someone's got air conditioning and heating or something to that effect in there. So I don't know if there'd be boats or cars, or if it's a repair shop. These won't be, so they won't, well, there's a lot of people building shops around here for guys who need businesses. But the lighting being on all the time, Leanne's whole backyard will be illuminated every night.
I can't agree with that. And you're right, she's, if you live next door to someone, the light, I can see the light.
They're eighteen.
It's like you can see your neighbor's light on across the street.
They're as high off the ground as opposed to that ceiling is.
Yeah, but the wall packs have to be screened by our outdoor lighting.
But they're screened, but you can see the light bulb. It's so far off the ground, you can see the light bulb in it.
But when, for example, in the rear part of the building, where what we only have to do is lay out that twenty-five-foot driveway, we can screen, we can light down, we don't have to light out.
It can be fixed.
The, the traffic consultant will be here next February, we can address driveway, things like that. I'm more than happy, perhaps, Mr. Ellison and I can meet with Leanne, tweet now and then go over some of the details of what, where the water's going, what kind of fence it's gonna be, what kind of trees it's gonna be, all that stuff.
We can fix it up as well?
Yeah, because I'll be there, we'll get it all put in, right, we'll put it on the plan, no problem.
That, that being said, the one thing that, with the landscape plan, that abuts that particular residence, more work needs to be done on that, that plan.
Yeah, could we, David brought up a question about whether he'd like this, we have, I think, fifteen blue spruces and eighteen white pines, and he had asked if we should shrink the number of white pines?
Well, the white pines, what's gonna eventually happen with the white pines, once they get up to a certain height, they're gonna lose their branches at the bottom, and it's gonna be a lollipop sort of effect. You can see.
So replace it with a different.
So, so you're gonna need some bottom planting somehow, for in the future. Not when it first gets planted, but eventually, and you're not gonna put pine trees in there that are so tall to begin with that they're gonna do what you want.
But you want the Christmas tree style.
Right.
Of every green.
Okay. Yes, Chief.
What is the exterior sheeting siding? It looks like it's polished aluminum, it's not aluminum, but is it?
It's like, yeah, metal, metal panels.
Is it gonna be reflected?
Is?
No.
Have you given any thought perhaps, and again, I'm kinda reading the room, and I live in the town, and I gotta go by this myself too, but, to be honest with you, it looks like it belongs in Houston or Logan Airport. Have you considered maybe if you did some type of like a, any other type of siding to kind of fit the neighborhood a little better or something?
What side?
We, we wanted to hear some ideas, because it is hard to design a building for this use for the Cape Cod style, because the building doesn't have peaks, you know? So, again, that's where we have these meetings, to try to get some ideas of what it could be like. Now, you know, one of the things the town wanted to get away with is that rectangular building across from the Yale House, not the new strip mall there, but Vinnie DeAndrea's building, is made of masonry block. And we did not wanna see that, I don't wanna speak for the plan, but we wanted to get away from that. But how do you build a rectangular building and quote-unquote soften it up or whatnot?
Can I? Well, I'd like to jump in here if I can. So just, simple search online. Simple Storage Hyannis Storage Self-Storage has shingles. Hyannis Sun Storage has clapboard siding. Falmouth Control Climate has a brick siding. Falmouth Sun Self-Storage has siding. Yarmouth Lockup has shingles. Then we can go visit Wellesley and Newton, those places look like new high schools. They have architectural detail, they have roof lines, they have windows, lots of windows, they have lots of architectural stuff.
There's one in Waymouth that has like a, it's like a mortar masonry exterior type of thing, there's different versions of it.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't buy this argument that it doesn't lend itself to Cape Cod style or New England style. Did, did an architect try a rendering and it just come out bad?
I haven't spoken to the architect. That, this is, this was the plan submitted, and we wanted the feedback, so we can look into, and we'll look at those other buildings. Some of the buildings, different sizes shift. The one on Route Eighteen at the Waymouth Line is what, a one-story building, basically, it's a different look.
Right.
You know, in Abington.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, we'll be glad to look at how we can mock it up, maybe bring in two versions of it and see what.
So, here's, here's my concern, is that the residents of Abington, the ones, they're gonna have to look at this building for the next forty years. And this building as designed is not pleasant. It's industrial, it's out of scale for the neighborhood, and I think it's a detriment to the neighborhood, and if this is what it looks like for the next meeting, I won't vote for this project. Simple as that. Everything else aside, I will not vote for a building that looks like this in Abington. This is not good for the town of Abington. The number-one thing I hear about this town from people who live in town and outside of town is what is going on with Route Eighteen, it does not look nice. And I think Route Eighteen's gonna be our gateway to the town, and this is how people are going to know about Abington because they're driving up and down Route Eighteen. It needs to speak better to what, you know, have a little bit higher expectation as to what this thing looks like. Couple other questions, can I ask Mr. Chairman or?
I had open for the public first.
Okay, then I'll go.
They're gonna come to us afterwards, if you wish.
Yeah, I'll, hold on.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
I'm talking about seven thirty-two bed right next door. I had a couple of questions. What's the setback on my side?
Twenty feet?
Fifty-three point three feet. Okay. And the other thing is, how tall is this building? You said forty feet?
Yeah, that's what it said.
It's forty. Because I'm more concerned now of being shaded out. I know you're saying Dempsey's building's the same height, but it's not in my head. Because the roof倾落 towards me.
It's hard, it doesn't show the other house. I can tell from the plans here.
Everybody's looking at it, I see it looking at it, that's why I'm waiting.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at, you know, how we can fix the shading issue.
Okay. My other question is, is it a twenty-four-hour facility?
Yes.
Okay, what about entrance on my side? It looks like a narrow driveway and a carport. Is there garage doors or anything there? I can't, you know, on the rendering, the guy's saying, all you can see is this corner. Well, I'm, I live on the other end. This is where, this is how.
Yeah, that's what I did.
You're asking, is there something on this side?
Yeah, would people have access in there into the building, be parked in there, you know? I'm talking, maybe someone pulls up in the middle of the night.
There's a fire exit entrance right here on the side? I don't know that there's any, oh, there are doors on the side of the building.
No, I believe that the only door on that side would be the Egress store.
Right.
The front and the back.
Up on outside, is there any?
No.
And I know I saw gloves store places, you see, I've been parked outside, always parked, they keep extra stuff. I have not.
No, I don't know.
No, I don't.
Okay. And there's one other thing, is what are you using to hold back the land towards me? Because you're gonna be raising that, you said three feet, and I'm already ten feet below, below that property on my side, because blood's my up all the time. Shown you to that one, because they're changing all the water, I was getting previous before.
Yeah, we would be doing, right now it's supposed to be a two-to-one slope, about five feet from your property line, it would be built up.
A forty-five-degree slope? You're talking, two-to-one's forty-five?
Yeah, two-to-one, so.
That doesn't hold very well in rain.
We would have erosion control mapping to stabilize, to get that established, there's a curb line just there that takes away most of the area that currently runs.
Yeah, you know, you catch it all, catch the catch base.
So it'd be significantly less that there are, going towards, you know, just keep up all the landscapes.
Yeah, no, that's fine, because I get all the parking lot, or group piece of the parking lot coming in my yard now, because the drains is all clung up over there. There was one other one now, it's totally sticking. Oh, the fence, we talked about this before, you said step down to ten feet from the street?
Yeah.
I should say ten, it'd be twenty feet, because the state line's about ten feet off the end of the sidewalk.
Yeah, the bylaw, town bylaw says a fence has to stop twenty feet from the front lot line, or it can stop ten feet as long as it steps down to no more than four feet.
Right, well, that's what I'd like to see, just like we talked about before, because cars are gonna be falling in there, you're shining, you know, my fence windows downstairs.
You'd like to see the ten-foot stop, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, I don't care if it's down to four feet, because that's above what a headlight would be.
Right.
It's on a big box.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I don't care if it's down to four feet, that's above what a headlight would be, it's on a big box, that's what I'm concerned with.
Thank you, any other questions?
I apologize, if this is twenty-four hours, is this gonna be a resident employee in here, is there gonna be a partner in the building?
No. In twenty-four hours, you'll have access to your unit.
So, the garage doors in the main building would be open, or they could open them?
Well, with a code.
You're gonna get key fob or whatever.
There won't be somebody in the office twenty-four hours a day, no.
The end.
Most storage facilities are that way.
The end.
That was my question.
Okay.
If there was gonna be somebody on the site, if it is open twenty-four hours, will somebody be answered?
No, the office is not open twenty-four hours, it's twenty-four hour video surveillance and all, but, no, usually it's gonna be closed.
Is there no question? These are the wall packs are down lighted, basically, and I understand that there is some, you know, scatter, but.
All of our, we have a separate zoning bylaw for outdoor commercial light, which requires no light trespass. And we had to submit, we have a photo of the plan that we submitted.
Who am I talking to about that?
About what?
I got another issue with lights.
About future lights or current lights?
Current lights for Manhattan Auto there.
Yeah, we won't take that up tonight.
Well, I know that, I just.
Zoning enforcement.
Existing, technically, you gotta be a neighbor and complain and see if they'll move it for you.
Yeah, can, talk with the building inspector if you need that.
That's fine.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I, you may have answered, I missed it, but I was questioning what kind of water tables there will be with all the sitting that will take place, because that's gonna be a huge building.
I would presume it would be less than what's there now, and Dave could probably answer that better than I.
Yeah, we've looked at the drainage analysis, and all the water is going into a subsurface catch basin and piping system which is directed to the bag. This is not being dug, this doesn't have a foundation in the ground, it's all a slab on grade.
Okay, so it's not gonna be done that deep?
No, I'm correct, it's a slab on grade, so there's no excavation into the groundwater
Okay.
or into the ground, it's all at grade or above grade, so there'd be no effect on displacing water from the building. It's being collected and directed, as they said, to the back of the site.
Right, because they resurfaced our street, this path here, and since that time, the runoff seems to be more in front of my driveway. I'm getting more of a runoff than I did previously, and it must be have something to do with the way it was, he's a graduate of your level or whatever. So, I don't need more.
Any other questions?
Yes. Karen Owen, Abington.
Yes.
What are they gonna do about snow, where are they gonna dump that?
Dump what? Snow? That'll be addressed, and certainly, there's quite a bit of room for snow there, as in some.
They storing the snow on the property, which is gonna have to be a better yard?
No, I would doubt that very much, and Dave could probably answer that, but there is plenty of storage areas compared with most projects that come before us.
I think they do show snow storage area.
Yeah, we're gonna have some snow storage area under the landscape area. Shaw here.
If they want to eliminate some of the twenty-seven parking lots, which I assume is on the other side of Shaw, my kids don't stay there, so these people that live on Shaw don't get enough. She obviously just said that she's getting more than she'd ever been before.
Right, exactly.
'Cause of the street, yeah, they crown the street, you're right, so you're getting the waters going to the outside. This, water from this property is not gonna be going out to Shaw Avenue to exacerbate your problem, it's going the other way, towards Trukey's Underground.
Uh, wait a minute, you next, yes, sir.
Is that a question, please? So, now you said all the water drain, right, it's anything that falls on the asphalt, falls on the building, correct, will go to this basin wherever? So, now you stack all the snow up on the green space here on the lawn, that's not gonna drain anywhere, it's just gonna drain into the ground and go wherever it goes, correct? What doesn't drain into the ground beneath that will drain onto our pavement on the site and go through the drain? So, that's what I'm saying, how fix this pile of snow, now you're gonna assume all this water's gonna drain back on your asphalt, and none of it's gonna go into the dirt, none of it's gonna go into Shaw Ave?
If the ground is frozen, that's what will happen? Yeah, it will shoot back towards the pavement, go down slope. I mean, like any commercial property, tire, or loads, if you have a snowstorm, there's areas where they can put the snow, you might lose a parking space or two while the snow's there. If you have a blizzard like we had, what, three years ago, whatever, you have to pay to remove it off your property.
You were gonna say, you said stacking it up on the pavement is one thing, but stacking it up on the dirt is another. Guys, remember guys, the drains, there was plenty of areas, all drains itself, well, asphalt drains itself. The grassy area where you're packing it doesn't drain itself.
I think, we'll try to give you some more detail in February, because the board is suggesting, I think, we're gonna have a discussion about eliminating some of the paved parking areas, having more green space areas, which may open up some areas for storage.
Mr. Howe.
This is Dave, you were talking about stormwater management, how big a retention area behind that upper storage area where the water's going, would that gap there, do you know?
How big an area?
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's kinda small, the basin that's in there now.
It's larger than the existing basin.
How much? Would you know? Would be anywhere you can find out?
I mean, I think this is the.
That's where the basin is now in that area.
It's right back here.
Yeah, and it's right behind me, which, you know, is whatever, if there is a storm, like the stone area with your finger, is that drains down.
For Trukey's, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that's where the existing basin is now.
I mean, you're doing a lot of improving old surface there, so you're gonna have a lot of runoff, so I'm just trying to get an idea how much water coming off of there, if it would overflow and back over to my yacht?
No. I can answer, I think you do it better. Excuse me.
So, this basin is bigger than the existing one on site?
Yeah, the other one in there is tiny.
Yeah.
And there's so much brush out there, it's not even funny now.
Yeah.
It's never maintained.
And so, it's designed to, it's gonna direct runoff out this way and down towards the low point into the wetlands, for, you know, larger storm events?
Yeah.
So, nothing will be shedding this way towards your.
So, you're gonna fix the burns that's on this side and on my side of it?
Correct, yeah.
You might wanna take a look at the grading plan, I think it might be a little more apparent to you what they're doing. I would say footprint-wise, it's probably a little over twice the size of what's there now, just graphically. But I think more importantly, the depth of it, I think, is a little deeper, so there'd be more storage volume.
Okay.
So.
Where can I see that?
Take one of these plans.
That nickel, oh, you got it here?
Yeah, mine, yeah, mine. Just always leave up.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Tom Tashin, I'm knowing some of you that are talking, I have two questions. One of them is, the garage in the back, you said it was thirty feet deep, and how wide? Ninety feet, ninety. So, you're planning on putting twenty-five foot boats in there, things like that, RVs or whatnot? They're not gonna come out and turn down your head towards Bedford Street, they're gonna go straight out, right on something. Now, you've got people, I hate to say, most people that drive a boat move twice a year, so you're gonna have people with a boat coming out, trying to make a corner, running across, leaving God right here trying to make that corner. Anyone coming in and out, you're gonna have that problem. Another thing is, I noticed where you said the drive-through for the entrance, you went through the middle, and you'd have storage on the right and the left. Earlier, when you said putting a second driveway out onto Bedford Street, you actually went to the end of the building, where I would think that it would be better to put this second driveway, the first one where it is, put the second driveway right in line with the entrance. So, in case a bite of that had come in, they wouldn't come down, have to take a right, a left, and a right. They'd just take a turnoff, and you'd be looking right through the center, and it would make it easier. The eighteen-year-old that rented a U-Haul that came in, it's gonna take left, right, catch the corner of the building, catch this, you know? Making those corners easier is gonna be better, and that would put the two entrances at a hundred and fifty feet and three hundred feet down the street on Bedford Street, and you wouldn't even be able to need the, um, Shaw Ave.
Now, we'll see. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Try to make it short.
If we keep saying that this is the lesser of the evils here, but I just don't understand why we have to choose between two evils at all. Say, oh, it could be something that's worse, it has more traffic, if there's some type of more traffic, we can say the same thing. Why don't have whole entrances on eighteen? Why, like you said, oh, it could be a restaurant or something, something that's more fitting of this area.
You know, I can assure you.
I don't understand why we need to pick the lesser of two evils when.
I can assure you that there's gonna be something built here. There probably is nothing that I can think of off the top of my head that is gonna have less traffic than what's going in for this particular project. If we have a restaurant in there, it's obvious, there's gonna be more traffic in one day than there is in a month in this operation. That, it's difficult to say to you, this is gonna go in instead of that or something else. What was originally proposed here was apartment complex, which people were all up in arms about. It didn't go in because it didn't agree with the zoning on that strip. So, that is not, we're not gonna have apartments there unless the zoning board of appeals allows them to go in there. In this particular case, if you come right down to traffic, this is probably one of the best things that can happen there. I, but you might say, we don't want this building there, and that's another whole issue. You're gonna listen to what I have to say.
I understand what you're saying, but I just wanna see why we have to choose between the lesser of two evils. Like Mr. Jones said, once something's existing, you gotta go and try to appeal it later, right now is our only chance. Hey, we don't wanna see this, we don't like how this is being done, if, once it's done, we're stuck with it.
Thank you for your input, I'm not gonna answer the question, thank you. Any other questions? I'll get you. No other questions now for the board, questions?
Couple of questions, couple, just wanna reiterate a couple of things. Is there a limit on the size of the vehicles people can bring in to drop something off, or move something, or pick up something?
You mean under the property?
Yeah, like, there's some big moving vans, is there a limit on how big the vehicle can be to come get something?
Not currently.
The question is, could a tractor trailer come in with product, is that what you're asking?
That's one of them, but also, if you use a Mayflower moving van, it's pretty big.
Right, but I don't know whether that, I guess, I'm asking the question now, but could a tractor trailer move into the warehouse, and would that be feasible?
It's not really designed for that.
Please.
It's not really designed for a tractor trailer.
I would think it wouldn't be, but I just wanted to get the.
The units would be.
Yeah, it's more like a U-Haul.
My concern isn't so much as to getting into that indoor thing, but it's more getting out.
You can do the indoor, you can stay on the outside and still access the elevators.
Yeah.
You know, if people have carts, they can put their things on and wheel them inside, you don't have to drive in there.
My concern is more when they're turning out, particularly if we keep the Shaw Ave exit or entrance, which I guess might be up for debate a little bit. Can you make that swing down Shaw Ave in a Mayflower van? I don't know. I'd be concerned about what the limit is from what can use that entrance and exit. I don't know if that means it's better to have just the one exit and entrance off Bedford. People are gonna be bringing big things in there, so I just wanna make sure that we're not running into a problem where the property owner across from that entrance is getting tire tracks across their yard, or knocking down granite curbs, or whatever's on that side. I would just be concerned about making that tight turn. Chief, can the fire trucks make it out that entrance?
Yeah, well, we have a good in, turning radius playing up. I'd like to see the entrance on Route 18 wider.
That was one of the days.
Do you have a concern if there's only one set of entrances and exits?
As I said before, I think the way that is now, I think people are gonna cut through it, that might be more traffic capture. I'm not an engineer, but we know how people run and drive, so if you eliminate the Shaw Ave entrance and the front one on Route 18, that may solve it. I think, we're doing that now, between U-Haul, between the storage place up on eighteen, we've got really one main entrance in there, especially the one, there's many properties around here, we have the one main one. As long as it's wide enough, we can get in.
Okay. Again, this more is if the Shaw Ave entrance stays, someone raised the idea of the community using the sidewalk that goes by that entrance and exit. I don't know how close the fencing would be to that, I'm concerned about being more of a blind drive where someone's pulling out, they're not seeing someone come down the sidewalk. If we do keep it, it is a way of opening up that line of sight so that they can see somebody in a wheelchair or walking slowly down, just to avoid any accidents.
End of fence would, even if it went to ten feet to the lot line, there's, looks like another, probably ten feet to the sidewalk.
Okay.
So, I don't think it'll be a blind corner.
Okay. I also had a question about the rear screening for the neighbors, it sounds like it's gonna be worked on. I don't know, I don't know if it's possible to fully screen from the neighbors, but as much as we can do would be my preference. And you said it's accessible twenty-four hours a day, that there's a security system, are all hallways, entrances, doorways have cameras? Or at least, how does that work? Are you able to say?
I'm not completely with the design actually of the building on the inside yet, so I couldn't answer that question right offhand.
Definitely the outside, that's a, that's a good question.
Definitely the outside.
Yeah, it's just my concern, particularly since, and I hate to bring it up, Abington is a cut-through, crossroads community. We have activity that isn't good sometimes. I just wanna make sure that, you know, as, we're just making sure that we're to have this be a secure facility and not something that's a little bit of a blind spot. Oh, just so you know, as you're doing, preparing the site, as we have the heavy equipment on the scene, I will ask that in our conditions, if this is approved, that there's dust remediation and, not so much, as much for the neighbors behind it, but also there's an apartment across the street with families, who knows which way the wind's gonna blow in a certain day, just to make sure that it's, you know, watered, tamped down, mud off the streets, that stuff. That's all I have for now, sir.
Any other board members? Yes, please.
Okay. I was gonna wait, and we're gonna have a traffic review for this, or for Old Colony Planning Council, we've done signal warrant analysis at the corner of Shaw and Bedford, and it hasn't warranted a light, so I guess my million-dollar question is, would the additional traffic volumes from this site meet the signal warrant requirements to have a signalized intersection on Shaw?
No. No. Not even close.
Because, I mean, I think that's what a lot of folks, I've sat, I did the turning movement counts for those signal warrant analysis. I've sat in Russ Wheeler's parking lot and done the AM and PM traffic counts. So, I know, but I didn't think that it warranted a light what I saw. But my just, my concern was with the additional traffic. And again, I know you have to go through Mastod to get the curb cuts and stuff like that, but if it was me, I'd recommend that, you know, most of the entrances and exits on this thing, if all, could be on Bedford Street rather than... Because even though Shaw Ave doesn't meet the signal warrant analysis for a light existing, or what's predicted with this in the future, I still think it would be a great thing for the neighbors, the people who live on Shaw Ave. Because even though it doesn't meet the signal warrant analysis, there still is a hell of a lot of traffic going in and out of the street.
If I could ask, maybe you can find this out, I'm under the understanding that the state looked at it, and they didn't wanna put a light there because they're trying to get the traffic to accelerate, and at that point.
No, no, it's.
That's what I heard years ago.
There's a study, okay, a traffic guy's in my office, I used, I worked for VHB a million years ago. Employed two hundred, two hundred and fifty, he was an ass hanging, I like to tease Jeff Durk about that. But, no, it just, there's, this traffic, this is manuals, traffic manual, and, you know, you have to meet the certain warrant. So, there's nothing to do with accelerating the traffic. We look at every, when we're asked, our traffic guys are asked to do a signal warrant analysis study, they can break this down, they do the turning movement counts, they look at the traffic flow, it's all put on a chart, but it has nothing, it's done very scientifically and very, with engineering principles, and you can determine whether or not a light is needed at an intersection. That's what a signal warrant analysis is based on.
Okay.
I'm a planner, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I've been doing this for an awfully long time, so I understand what this is. And, you know, one other thing I wanna address too is someone's concerned about four-lane U-Haul. There's, if you look at the traffic volumes on Route 18, there's drop-offs in several places, particularly at the corner of eighteen and fifty-eight, for example. Eighteen and one thirty-nine, yeah, I think the most recent traffic volumes we've seen have been twenty-four, twenty-six thousand EBT on that stretch. But again, Old Colony Planning Council, where I work, has something called a tip. It's a, it's a, it's a program for traffic improvements and stuff like that, we don't have anything on our tip right now for lane eighteen, you know, south of one thirty-nine. It's not to say that it wouldn't have it, my opinion is there's a lot of intersections between here and Bridgewater, and when you get to Bridgewater, you've got a giant rotary traffic circle in the center of Bridgewater, so if you're four-lane eighteen, you'd still have to deal with Bridgewater. But, I mean, it's not to say that it wouldn't happen, it's just that we don't have anything on our transportation, Old Colony Planning Council, which is the NPO, Regional Transportation Planning Agency, we don't have anything on our transportation improvement program right now that talks about four-lane eighteen.
How far out is that? How far out?
Maybe ten years plus.
How far out is that program?
We go ten years, twenty years out, 'cause, you know, we get something on a tip, it takes a long time to get a project, get the funding, you know, and it goes through phases of design, so it takes years, literally, and something as major as doing any, they've done a lot of improvements on eighteen, they paved it.
So, you know, if it happened to come on your tip, it could be. So, you know, if it happened to come on your tip, it could be 20 years.
It could be decades before...
That's where I was getting it.
I'll be long retired before I think it's...
You could potentially say 30 years.
If it were to, yeah, if, if it were to be even proposed.
Minimum.
We know how, we know how long it took to four-lane 18 from Route 3 down to 139. That, that project... This is, this was driven by volume. It wasn't, you know, the improvements, when they proposed redeveloping the Naval Air Station, for example, why don't you four-lane it then? The Mastod guys would tell you, it can't, you can't do things like that until the volume justifies the improvements. So, that's what's gonna drive any widening of 139 for, of 18, excuse me, is the volume. The increase in volume that would necessitate the widening of the road to handle it. This takes an awfully long time. So, there's your little transportation.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yes, a couple.
Go ahead.
One, a new one.
Please.
As everyone from Shaw knows, we've been, we've lived in a minefield for years of road, and they just finished paving it. And it's proposed to dig up Shaw to act, put the water line, the gas line, or the waste line. Is it possible that we can tap these utilities off Route 18 rather than digging up Shaw Avenue again? To, the utilities are proposed to come out of Shaw Avenue, come off Shaw Avenue's branches and turn into the, turn into the building. And I'm asking the question because we all know that you can't patch a road once it's dug up. It's, it's always a pothole from that point on.
We can look at it.
We could look at it, just look, if you look at that. It may have been looked at that because that's the closest, and that's what I would have shown it to.
Yeah, it was a question of opening up the state highway, which opens up a different can of worms to, I don't know the answer, so I'll find out.
Wow, okay.
Dempsey's has a sand pipeline going in the building. I want you to know that. I love the six-inch main block.
I don't know.
And there's also a sewer line going in.
That's one. The, the other thing I do, is, as passive as the building is, the lighting, and I'm, I'm assuming that it's a secure building, so you're not worried about someone drilling a hole through the wall and, you know, or maybe you are, you know, trying to break into the building. But if the lighting could reflect that, the building's a secure building, perhaps. I mean, I was actually thinking along that eight-foot fence. I threw out the idea of, you know, what if it was an eight-foot stockade and the lamps, the lamps lighting of the drive were, or at eight feet coming off of that to illuminate the drive without having, without having to illuminate the building? And perhaps the deep wall packs could be on motion sensors, so that when someone pulls up to that door, or someone walks up to the door, that they come on. But, but if the lighting, there's been some good examples of some pretty passive lighting. I think Lowe's might be a little on the underside of lighting, but they've, they've got, even though they've got tremendously tall poles, but I mean, that same kind of soft lighting. And everything else is pretty much everyone's mentioned what I've listed on. What I'd like to do is if you give us an extension for a letter for the February 3rd meeting, we'll, we'll continue the heating, uh, meeting to then.
I don't think you need our permission, but...
No, but...
Before we break, would, no mind, just, we do need to address if you would like us to reduce the amount of paved parking spaces. If the board wants us to proceed that way, then I have to file a separate application for a special permit to the planning board, which would require another notice, and another notice is getting mailed. But I think we'll have time to schedule for the same February 3rd hearing.
That, that, as far as I'm concerned, I would go with it. I'd like to see a reason for it. Can you explain that you don't need all that parking?
The traffic report confirms that.
So, the next meeting, our traffic people will be in.
Yeah, I mean, let's say if, if you're not happy with it, you can just deny the special permit, you can stay where it is.
Or if there's a problem with parking, we can, we can have it later, later on, maybe.
We would come in with a proposal to, you know, take away some of the parking spaces, extend the green area, plant another couple of trees near the building. So, I would assume, we have 27 now, probably go no less than 15, maybe, you know, we'll show you the lead 20. Whatever it looks good like.
Certainly Jeff brings up a good point on that light packs. I mean, that would, that would eliminate, I mean, I, I can barely understand what you're saying. It's not a retail establishment, so to speak. It saves them money.
We're gonna have to let them talk of the building. There's no...
No, no big padlocks hanging on the side.
It's not the fortress on...
I, I did have one thing for you guys to show in the traffic, because you're gonna be showing the turning radiuses of Fire Engine. The radius is coming into and leaving the building, when you pull into the building, it looks, from, because the scale is so small on the page, it just looks really tight that you, to turn, to turn into it and then leave, having enough room to turn out of it. So, if you just show those radiuses on the, on the drawing. We have a motion to continue the hearing from the board to February 3rd.
Motion made.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Can I just say for the neighbors, just so they know, so they're not gonna get another notice that this hearing got continued for cycle review, but you likely will get another separate notice that we're applying for a special permit to use it under a parking space. But call on the same project February 3rd.
I have one more question, really quick. I promise it'll be really quick. One of these women, as they mentioned about the Gigi Design, now those could maybe presented on February 3rd or July 1st or something.
Yeah. We're gonna try to, I took notes, hopefully I took good notes, I'll use my notes, we'll try to come up with a bunch of things. Things we can do, things we can't.
Right, okay, perfect.
Thanks.
I remember she was the vice chair. Chairman Wayne Smith has had to step out for this part of the hearing. Because it's time to talk about Zero Six Street, and we never closed this hearing. We have a, a, an engineering representative, we obviously have folks in the neighborhood here tonight. Mrs. Shea has told me that the, the proponent has requested continuance of this meeting until next, which is awful for you if you've come out tonight. We apologize. But we just got notice recently that the proponent would request a continuance until the February 3rd meeting.
Excuse me, can you give a reason why? I'm not gonna be here February 3rd, and I'm very active in this, so...
Well, the proponent isn't here and...
He is, Mr. Ryan, he's right here.
He's right here, yes. But he's requested a continuance.
Oh, yeah, I have something to say about that, too. I'm here representing all of my neighbors. You can see I've been sitting here with my four-year-old son for two hours waiting. So, I'm not very happy. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
It's gotta be some type of quota, I mean...
Or we need to run meetings better or something, because this is, we're, we're asking to be here at 6:20.
Well, it's, it's unfortunate that we, you know, if you look at our agendas and things are scheduled, for example, 6:10, the public hearing was scheduled for 700 Bedford Street, and at 6:20, the public hearing was continued for Summer Street. Well, I'm not gonna sound flip or sarcastic, but you can't expect to have a meeting in 20 minutes, I'm sorry.
I expected my business that we set meetings for times that you're expected to be there.
Especially given the fact that there were multiple people.
A 10-minute meeting, if that's not gonna happen, don't schedule it on the same day. I'm here representing many neighbors tonight.
Well, if, if the proponent had not requested a continuance...
Why didn't they request that first time? And why didn't, why didn't we know?
So, why didn't we get this before the meeting started? This is, this is, this is what consideration is all about.
Right, it was a business day.
Cause again, with all of this, we could have been alert, we could have, they may stop, they could have dropped brochures, could have dropped a flyer.
Could have put something on Facebook.
Like, there's something that could have easily have been done, just because the amount of time that we spent here and that, to think that I wanna come back, I'm already not pleased now.
I'm wondering why we live in this town.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you, the attitude that I'm gonna have coming back to there is not gonna be, and, and I'm a southern guy. I'm laid back and now I'm, I'm PO'd beyond 100 times, because if, if I come with the thought that I'm gonna be dealing with something and trying to discuss something, and this is my first time to get here since all of this has started, and now I gotta come back and try to find arrangements for children, try to find this, now I have a dog at home that needs to eat. Like, we're doing things now, and we've known about this since Thursday, that's not kosher, that's not cool. There are multiple things that could have been done to have handled this better, and to be completely honest, I haven't said nothing, because I'm like steaming like one of those old cartoons, but this could have been handled a million times better, because it could have been stated before all the nonsense that I just sat through. It could have been handled way better, and I sat there and watched a million people keep throwing their hands up and throwing their hands up.
We were all here on time.
That's, that's, that's not. There's no consideration once thought about, the others of us who've had to sit here and watch a whole ton of other people, excuse my language, beat it out. And we don't get a chance to now beat it out and have to come back, it's just, there's a better way to handle this.
Can I just ask a question? Can I just ask a question, because I know everybody's standing up, saying about this, and we all did just sit through that, but why, I mean, a lot of you on the board knew that we would be at the Summer Street, and obviously, you know, we have your, you know, other people with you, but when someone had just said that he had the Summer Street, it's gonna be continued? I mean, wouldn't that have just been logical?
I would say logical.
It definitely would.
Would have been considered.
Definitely would have been. I think, I, I would apologize for that. I, we just jumped into this, this, this issue with Shaw, and we were just, actually, sometimes they will last very briefly, and then dissipate, they'll turn out and, a lot of it postponed to another time. That's why these things are actually so close together, because sometimes they make nothing, other times they're just, you know, even Summer Street will go on for hours.
We still know that they were gonna be here, even if it was gonna take 15 minutes for the first people kicking up the roof.
I mean, just in the beginning going forward, you know, just as a board, I mean, I think any board should be able to look at their agenda, and if they see something that's on the agenda, that usually has a lot of public response and interest. At the beginning of the meeting, I, I think you should just say, if you're here for this, yeah, we're gonna be saying that it's gonna be continued, but just to let you know, it's going to be continued.
Monstrosity. Would you folks cancel a meeting if three of us said we couldn't be here for it?
Can I just interrupt? Would it be possible to let them voice what it is that they, I'm here, certainly willing to listen, so that we have to make amendments or things like that? And then, and then carry it on. We are gonna carry it on to the next meeting. Is that possible, or is that just the people that, some people can't be here next, next month?
Well, I, I have two thoughts for this. We have some things in our packets tonight. Mr. Cody here from Beals and Thomas, and, you know, to address the supplemental traffic engineering peer review. We have this, we have a few professional presentations.
So, the traffic review, Mr. Dirk?
He's not here.
The traffic, yes. The traffic engineer, Mr. Dirk, Jeff Dirk from Van Ass Associates isn't here. So, we have a...
Oh, and Town Council.
And Town Council isn't here. So, we have two other principals that we would like to be here. And again, I apologize, well, we're sorry, you know, we have a meeting agenda. I guess we, we could have said upfront that this was gonna be postponed, but we have a meeting agenda to follow, and, and we did. But I don't think we have enough of the people here that we need to have, that you would like to have here present, Mr. Dirk, Scotty, other people who would do professional presentations on this topic. I think it, I think your time would be better spent listening to these presentations by these people who aren't here tonight.
Are they trying to wear us down, so we, so we lose interest in them?
It's not, it's not a question of wearing you down, sir. It's a question of having professionals who are involved in developing the site be able, the, the talk is professional. It's not disrespecting folks in the neighborhood, but there's, there's professional presentations involved in this, that are important for this process, and those people aren't here tonight.
They should have reached out. It, it just starts with a simple communication. And what, what I'm seeing now, as a person who lives in the South Shore between Raymond and now, I'm seeing there's just a lack of communication problem, and that's why you have so many town people pissed off, because this is something that simply could have just been set up and handled. Again, I understand meetings, I understand, I've worked for Boston's who had no company of what time and things with that. But the standpoint, there has to be someone who is managing and following through with any type of agenda. With an agenda, there should become little, little things, okay, we're barring off topic. That happened like multiple times. And I'm sure everyone saw me here, and I could sit there and tell you we're over time. I'm doing more face wipes and grabs, because I can't believe how disingenuous this has now gotten. We're spending more time talking about one thing, and now we're over two and a, two hours later. We're now breaching the subject, and now we're being told that this needs to be pushed back?
Well, here, I'll tell you what, we'll do. Mr. Cody is here. This, this is Mr. Matthew Cody. He's a senior civil engineer with Beals and Thomas. And he did the supplemental traffic engineering peer review. And if it's all right with the proponent, I think it would be fair if we could have a discussion tonight. Mr. Cody could present a little bit about his conclusions on his peer review, and we would entertain questions on that.
Mr. Chairman, why can't we just take public comment during this period?
What we have to say might not have anything to do with the traffic stuff.
And if this isn't the right forum, we can educate us who has the right to do it.
Well, the traffic engineer isn't here. This is a review engineer.
Are they not here because they were told that this was going to table, or are they not here because they didn't plan on being here?
I think circumstances... Sometimes people can't make meetings, you know, some people, people get sick, people have reasons for not making meetings.
Did they give you a reason why you weren't gonna be here? Were they told not to be here because of the table? That's my question.
Well, I can't say whether or not, because I don't, honestly don't know that they weren't, they were told.
He told me he wasn't coming.
Yeah.
Did that supply reports? By James, are you looking at reports there?
We got
No, just the traffic.
supplemental traffic review on Friday, which I forwarded to the board. Mr. Cody has not been able to prepare a supplemental engineering review, because Mr. Iredale was not ready with a plan in time. So, the board has asked that Mr. Cody be here, I think, to answer your questions, if you have them. The, the traffic, we talked about it tonight. If he's not here, it's better if he and his girls here, to discuss the traffic piece.
Well, I have the same report on the client, or anything.
If you wanna email me, I'll be happy to email you copies.
Yeah, that'd be great. That, that's why we can have more level discussion.
If you want to, the town's website, go onto the planning board, I'm Al Shea, and I'm in the Mayfair Cup. Just send me an email, we're happy to forward you the traffic review or supplemental engineering review. Any reports that I have, they're all covered by me. Happy to share them with you.
Thank you.
Because I think this is one of the key things that we've talked about in the hearings, that traffic is obviously a very key issue with you folks, and I think it's important that we have as much professional representation, meaning engineer Dirk, professional engineer Dirk here, to, you know, who actually did the traffic review on this. It's not the short change your time. I just want you to get the most bang for your buck, you know, as far as professional representation goes. People will be able to answer your questions. If Mr. Dirk was here, I think he'd be a great asset to, you know, answer the traffic questions that you folks have.
Can I ask one more question, and then I'll just go away? I'm more, I mean, yes, the traffic is very important to me, but the environment is even more important to me. There are a lot of wild animals on Summer Street, and it is a high-stroke zone for deer. On the initial proposal for this, I saw nothing taken into consideration for the wildlife, or the wetlands. So, I would like something to be done in that area as well.
We're putting this in the record, and this is gonna be noted, and this will be communicated with all the parties involved in this, the engineers, the proponents is here. And hopefully, we'll be able to have a professional answer to your question. Because I don't think anyone's on the board or a while, especially, sorry. Sir?
First of all, I apologize for speaking out of turn earlier. It's just sitting here, it's air-oating.
Name and address, please, I'm sorry.
My name is Bob Fred. I live on Walnut Street, 239 Walnut, which is just around the corner from this proposal. Is there such thing as an environmental impact statement anymore, or is that gone, gone by the wayside?
I don't think the project's large enough to qualify for it.
Yeah, you have to have, you have to have certain parameters to, to require an environmental impact statement, you know, it has to have an impact on wetlands and stuff like that.
It's, it's, but it's the size of the impact. It's, you know, thousands of acres or hundreds of acres versus the size that's, that's there now.
It's probably, I would, I wouldn't.
I would throw this question to our, an engineer sitting here, but...
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe, it's probably just not big enough. I'd have to double check, but it's...
It seems like every little piece of land that goes for something else in this town, it's sort of like... is sort of like, sort of like boiling a, a frog, you put him in cold water and then you start turning the heat up until it's too late and then there's nothing we can do about anything. You know, with this, we, I like the small town, I've been here for forty-five years, I like a small town. I don't want all this crap coming in again. I mean, just, can't we just leave it alone? Just because someone wants to make more money, more money and more money, they don't even take, take into consideration about the people that they're going to impact. And as much as we talk about this, it's still going to happen. You guys know it, we know it.
Well, again, we have to go through this process.
We know it's going to happen.
Yeah, we, we have to go through the process.
It, it may, it may happen, but hopefully we can make it the best project as possible.
If it's still going to happen, all that land is going to be cleared.
Unfortunately, they have rights too, unfortunately.
Right, with all that land getting cleared up, like you, what you were discussing earlier about trees, it's all going to be cleared up, little teeny trees are going to grow in there, it's never, and it's going to be, it's, it's going to be...
It's, uh, again, we appreciate your time and coming, this is a public process, we have to do things in a certain way and unfortunately tonight, again, we don't. I'll, I'll tell you what, though, I will entertain some more questions for the record, but understanding that the professional representation that you'd like, you'd like to be able to hear, you'd love to ask Mr. Dirk questions and other people questions. Does anyone else have any points they'd like to raise, please? Yeah?
Yes, Karen Rolland, what are you going to, where's going to be on the February third meeting that I can't be on, what are you going to be discussing? Because I've walked that property, I've walked that building here, I've cut into the path and there are people that live on Progress Street's backyard.
Right ours.
Yep, and also, if you're coming up from behind the D E P, it's all wetlands. Now, I understand the pond is spring-fed, but it's also a culvert that goes underneath the railroad tracks and floods the people that are on the other side of the railroad tracks. So, you're going to have the storm drainage, the, you know, stormwater problems, you're going to have predens with the water before, it's going to be a problem with the snow removal. I want to make sure that I'm there at that meeting that that's discussed.
Not to mention the fact that no one already stops, there's a crosswalk because barely seen, barely, and I've, I've literally had to call the police for me taking the dog, my kids and, you know, bikes and scooters and I got jacks that are driving thirty on Progress Street, coming on Summer Street, no one's paying attention, no one's stopping yet, now we're going to have more. So, what I gotta just sit out on the window and be that old wannabe dude, I'm not there yet, I'm going to get there, but I'm going to have to be calling the police every time I want to take my dog for a walk.
The gentleman in the back of the room that has...
By the way, Nick Richardson, ninety-four...
Take him, Mr. Richardson.
Paul Redmore, I live on sixty Summer Street. Just for the, in the inches of everyone's time, which is valuable, I think it might be better for students to have a separate night for this than we're trying to squeeze in with the other project that you were just talking about, because there's a lot of issues with that project, there's a lot of issues with this project, and I think squeezing them both into the same night is unfair to the people that, like, tonight sat here for over two hours waiting for this, um, and if you could find a different night, this young woman up front was representing several of her neighbors, maybe it would be better to do a separate night instead of February third, because at that point, one or the other of us is going to get pushed back again.
It's a, you know, we have our regular scheduled meetings, which is the first Monday of the month and this, it's, it's a really complicated production to do this because meeting notices have to be sent out, people have to be notified, we have deadlines as far as submitting items for these agendas. Mrs. Shea works very hard, we have all these deadlines and asking the proponent, I've been on this board for an awfully long, everybody says, oh, yeah, I've just been on board, that doesn't mean anything, I get this. Point is, I don't think, I've ever heard of having, of a planning board ever having a separate meeting just to, to address one agenda.
The problem is that you're going to be in a stick here.
Can I, can I make a request? Can we put zero Summer Street on the agenda first?
Well, we have a proponent here, sir, if you, would you entertain extending this till March first, but being the first item on the agenda?
I think we, we missed the last, uh, this would be two meetings that we missed in order to get here, we'd really like to go in February if we could, we're ready to go.
Was this part of the...
But you've already had to cancel that because...
Yep, you canceled.
You, you canceled this on us.
What's it called? Problem, problem?
You weren't...
There has to be some sort of, um, here.
Well, I'm addressing the proponent right now, sir, you were aware of the deadlines and you weren't prepared to present tonight, and again, I'm trying to be as nice as I can at this. These good folks came out tonight expecting to hear a presentation, but it's on you that you weren't prepared, and I'm not trying to lecture you, but this is the reality. Um, if you come in this room again, you've got to be prepared and you, we can't postpone this again. I think that it would be in the best interest of the people in this neighborhood, the people who have expressed that they're not going to be able to be here in February, if you were to go for the first Monday in March and be first on the agenda, and that way, people who have a problem coming here in February, they would know for certain that you would be on the agenda at six-twenty or whatever, six-ten, and hopefully you would be prepared. This will give you additional time to be absolutely prepared. This is something that I...
I hate to do it, but, um, I would, I would be willing to do another meeting in February if the rest of the board is.
I would too.
Yeah, I would.
And if, if we could come up with a different date in February, I, I don't have a problem doing it.
We can't do it on a Wednesday and there's another Monday that's a holiday, I haven't been there.
And hopefully everybody will be prepared this time?
Yeah, this is what I, this is what I always ask, what is the day you're worried?
I know the holidays really mess things up for the last...
February tenth?
That's, that's lined for...
How about you folks out there?
February tenth, that's the second meeting in February.
Eleventh, February, February eleventh, I'm saying, I'm getting, I'm getting this from my boss.
Tuesday? It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, only because the, the select would meet, they would use this room and they would meet the tenth.
February eleventh?
I'm just trying to think of the combinations, sir.
Is this something that you folks could attend if we were, did this on February eleventh?
I could be, yes.
All right. So, our board...
That will hopefully, don't want to put him off, we don't want to hold you guys, you know, we all, we all have problems with time, so, so...
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to meet with anybody that has any concerns or questions that you don't want to ask, you know.
It would be nice if you could give them your contact information if they do have questions.
And again, I think this is a good compromise, folks who wouldn't be able to come, you know, to the February third.
Good time.
You know, you could come to nine-eleven.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, here, presumably in this room. And hopefully we'll get this thing, get all your concerns spoken to and working on getting this addressed.
Can I...
We didn't even ask you.
...on the agenda, or are they going to discuss just the traffic feasibility?
The whole thing.
Whole thing. Jeff can, necessarily, but, I mean, he's always planning the third.
So, are we prepared? Is that possible?
She's allowed documentation on everything that's been prepared.
Welcome to come to the office and look at the four files.
So, could you email them as well?
I can't get you the files, then it takes up three floors, you're welcome.
No, email.
Okay.
Email.
Okay, email, if you can email me what you're looking for, we have to send you anything I have, I have it sent here. I have it electronically, I have engineering reports electronically.
Okay.
I think I have a revision of the plans electronically. Do you want to email me on the...
It's def, it's definitely not everything, though, right?
It's definitely not everything.
If you need, if you want to come and look at the file, you're more than welcome.
Three quarters of this little cut, all of documentation.
So, again, to reiterate, we'll have our February third meeting, but we will have a special being on this board on Tuesday, February eleventh.
I particularly don't want to make habit of this, but in, in light of the circumstances...
So, Jeff, someone would make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Someone second?
Second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Can we get that, can we get that in writing too, please?
We'll have it, yeah.
Your extension.
Yep, you can send me an email, put the week extension on it, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Jim, is discussion over? Did that vote happen quick? I had a call.
All right, I'll take a couple of more. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just, I'm, I'm just...
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'd have to give my name and address, yeah.
David Smith, nine forty-one Main Street, Ina Mass, I'm the trustee for Center Avenue Wheel to Trust, um, one of the, butters, I can sit down, right? We're all, I just, I, I have some concerns that I'd just like to present to the board based on the plans that I've seen, is they, they propose a, a buffer zone of twenty-eight or twenty-five feet. The trust owns a right-of-way easement over that property to Summer Street. I'm just concerned that they are presenting to the neighbors on Progress Street that there's going to be a buffer zone there for that, and that, the way I understand it is, is not, we have a right-of-way, we could put a road out there to Summer Street, we could cut all the trees down, whether we do it at some point in time or whether we sell the property and the new owners do it, that would, that, that's one concern. The other one that I saw is that wetlands, uh, replication from one part of the project to the other goes on the right-of-way and also that there are parking spaces on the right-of-way as well as the twenty-five-foot grass paved fire lane. Those are just concerns that I have.
So, how wide is your easement? Fifty feet and it goes from Summer Street out to Center Street?
It goes from our property on Center Avenue out to Summer Street.
Okay, and the whole thing is just fifty feet wide?
Yes.
So, what could the use be, just...
Access to our property.
Give us a second, second, I guess.
You can't...
With the few jobs.
So, you would, you would build an entrance off Summer Street through a wetlands to get to your property, potentially?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Mrs. Shea is our reporter secretary's notice. Chief Donald, did you have a couple of things?
I just have a concern of the whole process, not necessarily just how this meeting went tonight, I think you guys can take care of that internally, but, sir, again, you weren't ready and this is a few times we weren't ready. I got my, my fire lane, um, plans from you, we had to do it twice because you had the wrong-sized fire truck, it happens. The, the process, the plan that you just gave me, the lines are basically, it looks like they're hitting curbs and parked cars, I'm going to explain that to me, I understand that. We're at the planning stage of this major project and this is very amateurish, I'm sorry, but issues that we're running into at this stage, we're running into a major, uh, similar problems with a large project in an old warehouse, an old factory building in the attic that we just turned to a standstill because of pretty much a, a, a poor, um, planning and poor understanding of laws and stuff, get things done. Tonight's just another example, again, of this project just isn't coming together. It's, yeah, okay, for whatever reason it was put off again, the documents are off, at what point, if this thing gets a green light and, and we're actually going to start to construct something and maintain something, looking at the history we've had in the planning process, I have some concerns. And I guess I'm just making the same out there.
And I think Bruce and I both made the statement that we're starting to get concerned about people not being ready to present what they need to present.
Our, our biggest concern, I've been on this board a long time, and it's like any job, you expect people to show up with their stuff together, is a word, uh, when you present before this board, and again, I don't like to lecture, but I, I think I've said this to you before, we've, we have a clear idea of what we need to get from you and you're hearing the public and this board articulate how disappointed we are in this process. Now, it's our job to be objective and fair and, and to consider this objectively, but help us out. Be prepared, you know, don't waste our time by not being prepared. You had a lot of nice people come out here who are concerned about this. I've, I've got the fire chief of this town sitting in this audience, I'm sure John, Chief Donald could be doing other things, but he's here because he's a professional concerned about this project and you have the elected members of this board and a consulting engineer that came out tonight.
Mr. Sherman, if I could just disagree one point, I'm not begging him to his job, I'm expecting him.
Yeah, that's it.
And I'm kind of concerned that, again, at this stage, what is going to happen if this thing was on? Well, you can't ignore this, I, I know the fire department's not, I'm, I'm not impressed up to this point. I'm just kind of making a statement.
I'm just saying that we expect people to, to present before this board, to have their stuff together and present in a professional way and move this process along. It doesn't, it doesn't help anybody's prospects to delay this thing month after month by people not being prepared, people not being showed up.
And again, it's a complicated project, I get some, some of the delays, but...
But you're paying people, you're paying your consultants and stuff like that and we're paying people who review this stuff and we want to move on with this, so...
For the record, I'd like this to also extend to our consultants as well, because I'm tired of getting stuff from Friday, Monday night in my mailbox for our Monday night meeting. So, I'd like to extend that courtesy to the people who work on this side of the board too.
All right. Other comments, I guess we're going to see you folks again on February eleventh and hopefully the board will have everything to offer.
Any questions?
Thank you.
And you have, and you have needed, I'm like, at this point, I'd like to...
Thanks for the idea, Brian. February eleventh, thank you.
Yeah, well, I didn't want to come to another meeting, but...
Yeah, because we've been using like the, I mean, at this point, we've like a rope, we've, we've eroded like the Asbilt money, like we used it all. That's why.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to go to you. Sure. You have to know that I'm going to, or guys did.
Yeah, I spoke with them last week.
So, we get to a point.
Yeah.
This would be fabulous, but unfortunately also concerned.
Well, I remember if you're from the wedding, recently, yeah.
So we get to a point.
Yeah.
This would be fabulous, but unfortunately, I'm so concerned.
Well, I remember if you're from the wedding, recently, yeah.
I appreciate it.
I have a couple edits, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
First, on the cover page, we are now at 29 Middle Road, Abington, oh-one-seven-one-nine.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty sure.
Glad I didn't do that.
On page two, it's a nitpick, but I think it's an important one, it is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not the state of Massachusetts.
Absolutely.
Hold on, we were saying that?
Yeah. Last, last sentence.
On page two.
Yeah, it's at the very bottom.
Last sentence, so Commonwealth of Mass.
The paragraph above that, I just want to make sure that we're, that's a best practice for this type of application where we're saying that essentially it's going to be managed by an external party, not the, someone on the town side?
No, it's going to be managed by, their local contact will be somebody in, within the town, but it will be managed by the external person.
I want to make sure that that's an acceptable practice.
It is, because that person's going to get the several all the towns.
Okay.
But I will.
Okay, page three, under answer to question three, there's a whole thing about someone being hired by the town of Abington earlier this year. Who is this in reference to?
Oh, I think they're talking about Dan. But that's not happening. The yellow lines are because we haven't done the contact person?
Yeah, I just don't have yellow lines, I'm not sure.
No, I'm sorry, so.
Well, it's just a direct thing.
The stuff highlighted in yellow on my copy, which you guys didn't get, sorry, is that, it's for the local point of contact.
Do we know what the val, the worth of this contract or this grant is?
Probably fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's underneath the RPF requirement for bidding and.
Yeah, if it's managed by an engineer, it's not, there's no RPF, because I did check that with the county before we started the process.
Okay. And the only other, was on page five, we're talking about what some of the concern areas are in town, we talk about, you know, some areas prone to flooding during a one-hundred-year storm. Again, I know these people do this professionally, put this together. I question whether this is a accurate summation of what our concerns are, because if I'm reading this and going, oh, a hundred-year storm, you get a little bit of flooding on Route eighteen, I mean, I feel like it's a larger issue than just what's stated here. I could be reading it wrong, but, you know, just the amount of sump pumps we have in this town is quite a lot, and we get into it a little bit in the next page about how many properties are in the wetlands protection overlay district. I just want to make sure that we're accurately summarizing what the extent of the concern is in this town. And then that's, I think that's the only other thing that I had. Again, I know this is being prepared by somebody who's done this for many other towns, I just want to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward.
Any other comments?
It's a good start.
Please?
This is a good start.
Yeah.
I've got to go to one of these meetings tomorrow, and I'm glad Abington's getting involved in this.
Then we have the confirmed application of meeting schedules, and for some reason, that is not my package. I just had a couple of. That may not be it. Are there any other comments about the meeting schedule?
Do we need to specify the annual town meeting if we're not sure that's what the annual town meeting would be?
Is the annual town meeting starting to?
Oh, you're right, then it has to be a.
And so if they change it, they change it, but.
Okay.
We're going to add the February eleventh meeting to this.
Um, yeah, I can do that.
And I might not be there on the, on the sixth, but.
Which sixth?
On the sixth of April.
Okay.
Town meeting night. Which usually isn't that night.
No, I mean, they're going to move it to, I want to say the end of May, beginning of June, is what they're shooting for.
I missed town meeting last year because of my wedding here at First Street.
The sixth is what it's scheduled for.
I'm going to miss day four because it's my birthday.
No.
I probably won't be there at the sixth, I can be there at the thirteenth, but you could, it's whatever people want to do, I don't really.
Do you want to change it to the thirteenth? Won't be there April sixth?
You want the thirteenth?
Sure.
Could you be there on the thirteenth?
Yeah, I'll be there the thirteenth.
All right.
Or I won't be around, period.
Which, which month is that?
April thirteenth.
April thirteenth, that's probably a better date, because we're probably going to have zoning stuff to do, and better to have full votes for that.
And we haven't got a meeting in, in August, we just have that July sixth.
And it's September fourteenth, because the first Monday in September is the seventh, and it's Labor Day.
Really? It'll be the fourteenth, I won't be here for that, but you might as well have a meeting without me, it'd be good for you.
Which, which one was that, September fourteenth?
September fourteenth.
Fourteenth, not the seventh because of Labor Day.
I can't reach here.
Huh?
I can't reach here.
None of us might be advised on that.
I can't reach here.
There you go. So I guess that does it, all right?
Okay.
So those are, motion to approve?
Motion.
I can second it. Close the favor, aye.
Aye.
Do you have to just fix that application schedule for the April meeting? We have, for April sixth, you have three thirteen is the submittal date, so now it would be a month, a week, a week.
And town planner specifics for addition to budget. Do we have a document for that?
No, we asked you to tell, um, the town manager, we're going to recommend a hiring fellow for town planner. I communicated that to him, the town accountant, and our Democrat representative, the town accountant, said she would add to the budget, but she needed to know salary, number of hours, so we're back here.
I could hire anybody part-time. I don't, I don't think it's possible to hire someone part-time. Does the town want to work a forty-hour week or three-seven?
It's a, depending on where you want it to be, maybe thirty-two, maybe thirty-five a week. Five would be a thirty-five a week.
And so we have a thirty-five hour week.
I'm sure the guys want to want, a gal's going to want, you know, whatever goes with the perks and everything else.
Sure. Well, let me ask, are we going to recommend a full-town planner, or are we going to recommend an economic development specialist? Because I think there's a.
You need to recommend a town planner slash economic development specialist, and I'd say if you wanted to have a starting salary, I'll throw out a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To get somebody good, I mean, you could say eighty-five, say eighty-five to start, eighty-five.
Okay.
So town planner slash economic development specialist, eighty-five to start.
You get someone that's newer.
And I know one of the major reasons we want this person is so that they can bring industry to the town, and the thing that concerns me is that, and we had town planners before, and you hire people for this purpose and nothing happens over a year or two years, and I will grant you this, that it's not going to happen in the first six months, because it's a long process, but certainly, I'm not in favor of having someone be here at the office and not have some results, and I want a way out of a non-contract if we have someone that doesn't do the job. And it's tough, but I want some accountability.
Well, everybody is hired, is generally what, a probation period when people are hired?
But what's a probation period?
Three months.
Three months doesn't give you, I, I don't see how, I mean, they've, they've got to get out and contact other corporations, determine what land is available, what kind of a, it's not a simple process.
So we can accept.
Unfortunately, now you start signing, like, a subcontractor versus an employee.
If, if you hire someone, you pay them a hundred thousand dollars a year for a couple of years, and it costs you two hundred thousand dollars, and that person, at the end of two years, brings in some business that we wouldn't have gotten otherwise, could be paying us a hundred thousand or more a year in taxes, and it'd be a great benefit to this town.
Well, I can tell you from my personal experience with the people, the communities, we have these economic development, a planner slash economic development specialist, and Bridgewater and Easton are two great examples of that, and also Brockton, but Brockton's a city, but, I mean, it's worked for those communities, the people, it's, it's worked out very well, Bridgewater and, and Easton, for example, where people have.
But Bridgewater had a tremendous amount of land at one point, and so did Easton, and, and Abington, I'm not sure how much land we have. If, you were to say to me right now, Wayne, you know, what kind of land do we have? There's not a heck of a lot of land, and I, I, I just wonder what that person's going to be able to bring into town. I would love to see someone bring in some good stuff, come in, you know, inevitably, it's going to mean taking some buildings down and replacing them with something else. And, and we're going to see a lot of that, I mean, someone said to me the other day, well, another year or two, you'll have nothing to do on the planning board.
That's what they said years ago.
But I will tell you this, we are going to see a lot of homes torn down for something else.
Primary sample is that.
Some will be, some will be torn down just to, to build a bigger home, just like they do in the, you know, on the coastal regions.
I, I think the bigger issue is that maybe we don't have a lot of vacant land, but I think we have a lot of underutilized land, particularly on eighteen, and I think that's where someone like this could be helpful, is to help property owners understand how they could maximize the value of their property, or work with people in Abington Center and North Abington Center to say, these are the programs available to help you build bigger, big up, build up, fix it up, because there's been no investment in either of those areas right now.
This, you know, building on what Rick has said, if you have somebody at Town Hall, we've had these developers come to us, like in North Avenue Center, and say, there's no market for, for business, and we got to put residential in there, or even the pad site next to Target, for example, and I think if you had someone in here on a day-to-day basis that they could talk to, and they knew the programs and stuff like that, that they could, they would be more effective than us as a, as a elected planning board recommending or asking them to do this, when you have a professional who knows this, who can work with them to get these things done. That's where you, that's where you would get the payoff, Wayne, in hiring somebody, Mr. Chairman, you would get the payoff. It's not to disrespect the abilities of this board, but someone who's done this, who has experience in doing this, and can work with these towns.
And should be paid for that.
And getting paid for. Well, these two projects that came, the, the Summer Street and the Bedford Street one, are both examples, they're only, they're sound, using us as a soundboard, whether they should spend thousands of dollars more, because they're already spending thousands of dollars, had they come in with a town, a town planner, they would have been able to bounce these ideas off before they even spent any money, that, like that, I mean, really could cut off a lot of this stuff going on. I guarantee you, and I guarantee you, if we had a town planner, the stuff that's been going on with Zero, Summer Street, they would have talked to this person, and that person would have reinforced to them that they needed to come in here and be prepared to talk to us.
You know, Bruce, I, I've been on this board forever, and I'm telling you, I cannot believe how many people come in here unprepared. Now, tonight, as an example, you had three well-paid people over there, you had two more, maybe one was an owner, well-paid people over here, I think there's another one out in the audience, the cost for that developer tonight.
It's huge.
It's ridiculous, and he's still going to have to pay for a, a traffic engineer for, for what amounts to a dozen cars a day, and, and he's going to have to, we're going to charge him again for reviewing engineer for traffic, and that's going to, it's going to cost him another three or four thousand dollars. It, it's absolutely insane what it costs a developer to come before, not just Abington, any board, but I guess they put it in their figures, it's, it's sad.
Well, again, this would, you know, having a professional in the office, working with these folks, having them be prepared, because, I mean, I, I used to work for the EHB, I get, I have a vast idea of what those guys were getting, being paid to be here tonight, and.
But, but you're absolutely right, Wayne, is if this person doesn't deliver, then they're the first person that's laid off when there's a recession, if they're not pulling their weight.
Well, that's the thing, and, and if you hired a person in here, I, I would suggest that you've got to give them two years.
Absolutely.
It takes, I, I'm in some organizations where we, where we hire people to raise funds for an organization, they come into a place that's been raising funds, now they have to raise more funds. Well, he doesn't just go out tomorrow morning and get someone to give him a hundred thousand dollars, he has to work on that person for a year or two, or maybe even five years, and then they come up with a tremendous amount of money or, or a program or something. So I want to be fair to the employee we're bringing in, but I also want some kind of results, and I want to feel like I'm getting something from them.
And I, I would add, I think that the benefit isn't just commercial development, it's when we do our housing production plan, as Bruce is going to know, is that this person's probably going to be knowledgeable on state and federal funding for housing for seniors, which is a huge need in this town and part of our master plan, that they're going to be good with probably grant applications to help us do some of the stormwater and climate change protection stuff. So there's all these other avenues as well, that I think that they'll provide value to the town, as well as building out the commercial tax base, which we desperately need to do.
I, I'll tell you a funny story, I go, when I'm not here, I go to other town boards and present. I've been offered jobs a lot, I still have a good job, because like, when I present on an economic development plan or housing production plan, but hopefully we'll hire someone who has knowledge of this, Old Colony has done a housing production plan.
That is eighty-five thousand dollars a reasonable figure.
Well, I was just throwing that out, I'd say probably a hundred thousand dollars. Hundred thousand.
You make it the range.
To get anybody good, you, you'd want to hire an AICP planner, it's American Institute of Certified Planners, you know, I mean, to get someone good, and you'd want to have someone who's experienced in economic development, and there are people out there. And self-sufficient, I mean, like, one of the things I'm getting at from you, Wayne, is that there's no accountability, they're here, basically, they have no supervision, week, day after day, week after week, and only accounting every once in a while to the board, so how do you need someone that has to feel, put their own pressure on them, their own shoulders? And maybe we have to, maybe they have to develop, in the thing, they have to develop a, a plan as to how they're, you know, to show everyone, this is how I'm going to proceed, let's see your agenda for the next couple of months, or whatever, half a year, whatever you think it is, so you can see what you're working to.
At least, you know, this is who I've seen, and this is what.
Yeah, there's going to be a monthly report to the, there would be a monthly report to the board, just like the town manager has to report to the board selectmen, we'd have to have this person report to us on a monthly basis.
And the town manager as well. They technically have a manager, an employee of the town manager, right?
Yeah. I have a new boss, we have weekly staff meetings, I've got a line out to Mary, my new boss, what I'm doing every week, I've never had to do this before, I was always assumed that people knew what I, you know, what we were doing, but now she wants it in writing.
Well, I'd say you just get someone new, and doesn't know it, so.
Yeah.
I got to find her.
I don't have a problem doing that, I can do that.
The, the next step after this, though, is we need to start to lobby on it, because if we just let the town accountant go to the finance committee and make the case, they're not going to do it very well.
Well, I, I'm sure I'll have to go before the finance committee.
So, need to make sure we have a good argument in hand.
And that's what I need to, need to have before we go in there, and if a hundred thousand dollars seems to be the ballpark, then, and then we need to have some criteria, so it'd behoove all of us to come up with some criteria and submit it to me, I'll try to put it all together and see what we come up with.
I'll go on mass planners' list serve tomorrow, and I'll put this on there, towns considering hiring a planner slash economic development specialist. What, what's a good salary range, what would we need to attract somebody? I'll put this on there first thing tomorrow.
Right, but I can send to her a full-time town planner, AIC.
AICP. AICP.
And economic development specialist.
Yeah, town planner slash economic.
I always get nervous sharing with most, most towns, sometimes it works out great, but most of the time it doesn't.
Well, I'm not going to say Abington, I'm just going to say.
No, no, I understand.
No, I mean, I'm just going to say, as a general question, the planning community, what do you, I mean, I could call up Jennifer in Bridgewater or Stephanie in Easton, it's public record what they make. I, you know, I've got a job description for the town of Easton, they were looking for a planner slash economic development specialist, let's get that salary information, everything, I'll, I'll just forward it to you.
Great, good.
That takes care of it, I don't have to go on planners' list, or.
And the next thing would be the stormwater management rules or regulations, my law. And then the next thing would be the stormwater management rules or regulations by law.
Um, we're having a meeting, um, Thursday, with gentlemen who have been retained to help us through the process. Um, this is the draft and what I did. Um, and from that, I think, I hope you guys got that, that stuff. Some of it can't be, um, the text in purple, which I don't think we have purple, but some of the text can, as we changed because it's from the permit. And then doing some other text that, and, um, long story short, our meeting in the center being attended and suggested we come up with a stormwater management permitting authority, which would be a group of people in the town which are laid out in the bylaw, I believe. So it'd be somebody from the DPW, um, somebody from planning, um, somebody from the department. Yeah.
Yeah, it's on page four.
So, is that group, yeah, the stormwater permitting authority shall consist of five members whom shall permanently be in the art of public works, the planning board chairman, the conservation commission chairman, the health agent, and the building commissioner. And, um, so the, those people could, I believe, inform somebody, yeah, any power granted to or is involved upon the SWPA may be delegated in writing by the SWPA to a town employee board or agent. But they will be issuing authority and then the board of selectmen would appoint that word that's laid out that then the planning board, um, would adopt or periodically amend the stormwater management rules. And then there's, you know, other references to that the planning board would be responsible because stormwater management and permitting of that is more in a better planning situation versus a board of selectmen situation. So like the NITB, it's got to be better for the planning board to change the bylaws or, you know, to be responsive to that piece of it. So that's the big thing about the bylaw. I hope everybody had a chance to review it. We're meeting with them Thursday. If you have any concerns or questions.
So this would be in addition to like a site plan review that we do?
Yes. Yeah. Our engineers would be responsible, obviously. And then there's site inspections that are required.
These provisions could be easy.
Yeah, no, there's just, there's a lot of boxes to check as we're going through this.
There is, there's a ton of stuff in here. And we're going to have to almost, I mean, we'll have to integrate into the application and into the decision letters.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a tiny step, applying what it's going to be responsible for at the end of the day.
And it's every board in Massachusetts?
Every board in Massachusetts.
Actually, isn't every board in New England or, is this beyond?
Massachusetts. It's DPA and EPA here, so I don't know what the EPA is doing across the country.
Yeah, there's just some EPA ruling that came down, I thought, about this whole stuff.
There is, and that's, and so DEP picked right up on it and went running. So that's why we have these consultants got in this through the process and they've developed a lot of these, right from the permit itself, developed the bylaws and, um, those regulations.
Dumb question for the board that I just don't know the answer to. So our storm drains, where do they drain into? Do they get discharged? I assume they don't go into our sewer lines?
No, they don't.
Where do they?
They, they go into a different situat, they're, they're not allowed to go into the sewer.
Yeah.
Eventually, they end up into the streams in the ponds.
Okay.
Eventually, yeah.
Do we have a map in town of where they all go?
I don't know, I could ask the DPW.
I'd be curious to see one.
I'm sure the DPW has something like that.
Like on my street, this whole answer might drive down into the pond.
That's been the big thing, Rick, for years with, I don't think Abington's is bad, but Brockton's terrible with the sump pumps going right into the sewer system.
I know a couple of people that do that in town still.
Yeah, they, they try to prevent it. I know when you sell your house, you get an inspection from the sewer department sign off of it.
Periodically, they'll come around and look, they have a sump pump where it's going.
Well, I know Quincy...
Because he had discharged into the street either because of somebody doing that on West Street and they got fined. So there's a signal of fines.
There's still a few people doing it.
Also, a lot of people who are doing it.
It gets done a little too often. You see the broken pavement because of the ice they're making and everything else.
Well, I know Quincy got hammered by the EPA or is getting hammered because their sewer and their storm drains are too closely tied.
Yeah. I'll ask, I mean, I know that Old Colony has done that for several communities, mapped the storm drains and stuff. I'll ask, I'll ask to get, um...
I would just be curious.
I'll ask what we've done.
So if anybody has any questions, concerns, comments on any of this that you can definitely do me before Thursday, so I can bring you to the meeting with me. Do you have the laws of being attending the meeting?
What time is the meeting?
Two o'clock.
Let me ask this, because I'm not sure, does this imply that when we're reviewing these large fill operations, that they're going to have to be also submitted to stormwater management when they're re-grading, like they're bringing in 400 yards of soil or, you know, when it becomes our authority, we start, we start looking at the grading? Would that, would that end up coming underneath that too?
You mean the separate fill bylaw?
Yeah.
It's, I think the, um, the criteria is if you're disturbing more than an acre of land.
So this would, disturb more than an acre of land, that's full of landfill, it sounds like this could be part of it as well.
Yeah, I think it's disturbing an acre of land.
Oh, I see. Okay. I got you.
You know, there's so many, the environmental regulations, we talked about this earlier tonight with Zero Summer Street, as far as being the criteria and stuff, it's, there's a lot, it's, there's a lot of different things.
Yes.
This, this is huge, though, and it's going to be a war and war.
This is a real big state mandate thing that they have to...
It is, and it's, it's a, it's a huge thing for us to get done. And then just seeing what we're kind of doing there, I told the gentleman working with on the MDP grant that I would be willing to manage that grant, if it's all right with you guys.
Oh, sure.
All right.
In your spare time?
In my spare time.
Like our spare time?
Woo-hoo.
Yeah. You did get a couple hours, yeah.
I did, I did, yes. I need to tell them something. So I, and that is basically done with what we saw. I will make the changes as was suggested tonight and the letters of support, kind of all that stuff, so that should be ready to go. And so the last thing I need you guys to do is just continue 222 Center Avenue, the letter requesting continuance.
A motion to continue 220...
Motion.
222 Center Avenue to the February meeting, February 3rd.
What is that? Sorry.
Cross my train station.
It was the, um, he applied for special permit, you guys wanted to do like a site plan?
Yep.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. The only thing that comes in my mind real quick is that fellow that put all the brick and trash in his yard on Route 58. Have we heard anything on that?
Nothing.
Do we need to send a letter to the zoning enforcement officer to make, have that removed?
I think that might have to go to town council.
What's that?
Have to go to town council and start a finding process for that guy.
I think if we start with the zoning enforcement officer, he can bring town council in to do whatever.
He's going to tell us it's not his responsibility.
I mean, I'm disappointed we haven't heard a response or anything else. It's like Katie by the door and we, that can't happen.
It's not really his responsibility. The planning board's part of the film.
No, so do you want me to reach out to town council?
Go to town council then, but I mean, somehow or other, he's got to legally remove that stuff. I mean, the neighbors complained about it, we were notified.
It's going to end up in court?
Yeah, we notified them, they, they won't respond and they just, I wouldn't be a bit surprised someone's living there. That shouldn't happen.
Plymouth Street, right?
Please?
Plymouth Street, right?
Yeah, it's Plymouth Street. What's the name of the street that's not Exceptus Street there? It's right on...
Endicott Street.
Endicott Street. It's on the corner of Endicott and Route 58, Plymouth Street. Anything else?
One more question. The fire chief alluded to the New England Art Building, some problems with it. Is it possible to get an update on what's going on with that?
Yeah, I can email the town manager.
And the only thing I alluded to earlier, but I'll get this up with this formally. I live near, you know, 121 Randall Street and the lights were starting, we can see the lights, it's not occupied, but they have these exterior lights.
There's no, there's no electricity in there yet, the Edison's finally...
Well, there's electricity.
Finally.